Welcome to our Weaver County.
Thank you, Christie.
Welcome to our Weaver County Commission work session on this Monday, the sixth of May. We have a full quorum with Commissioner Sharon Bollas seated to my right and Commissioner Gage Forre seated to my left. I'm Commissioner Jim Harvey. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for the work session held on April twenty second, two thousand and twenty four.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second for those minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries. As we get the players coming into the room, we have Scott Park online. We'll have Emily Wild. This is a contract discussion. It's how it's listed.
Commissioner, I'm gonna shoot if you don't mind.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Park.
I'm just gonna share my screen really quick.
Thank you.
Let me know if you see an Excel spreadsheet.
We do.
We do.
Awesome. Thank you.
One moment while I minimize those guests who are with us on the other. That'll work. That'll work.
All right. Is Emily in there? I can't see her.
No, no, Ms. Wild is not here yet. Give it just a second. Scott, if you would.
All right.
While we're waiting for Ms. Wild.
She mentioned that she had a meeting, an interview shortly after our eleven o'clock appointment, so I wonder if she's in that already, but.
Do you need her?
I'm not. I'm happy to speak to both of the items, my portion and her portion, if you would like.
Let's go ahead with that, just in the essence of time. That's okay. Go ahead, Mr. Park.
Okay. So when we purchased the right to use Oracle, we purchased them through a software reseller. Oracle is our accounting, excuse me, our HR and payroll system.
Hold on, Scott, just a moment. Christie, say that again, please.
She might be.
She may be in an interview, so we're fine. Thank you for doing that. Okay, go ahead, Scott.
Okay. So we signed a contract with Oracle's reseller, the company called DLT, for a three-year contract for four hundred, just under four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. We should have been invoiced thirty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars a quarter, and we were only billed twenty-one thousand, two ninety-eight. So we first, when this first came out, we asked why. They weren't quite sure. They said they'd look at it. They never really got back to us. We really didn't worry too much. They didn't give us an itemized bill, and so we figured, well, we didn't implement all the modules. We were okay with it. We had fully budgeted for it. So we were saving money in our capital projects. Well, when they came back to now issue the fourth year of this contract, which was outside of our original scope. So we were negotiating that contract. I said, okay, we're not going to proceed until you give me a fully itemized invoice. I don't want to have the same issue as last time. And when they did that, they came back and said, oops, we actually underbilled you for the last three years. We had originally set the invoice to be a payment over five years instead of a payment over three years. So we underbilled you by fourteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars a quarter. So I said, okay, I mean, we still have the money in our capital projects fund. So I said, okay, well, what can you do for me? Can you lower that down a little bit? After negotiating with them for a little while, what they said they would do is let us pay it over two calendar years, so half in two thousand and twenty-four, excuse me, two quarters of that in two thousand and twenty-four, four in two thousand and twenty-five, and two in two thousand and twenty-six. So that let us finance that underbilling. I'm happy to keep the money in the county's capital projects fund and earn interest off of it while we pay them over the next four years. I'm also happy just to be done with it and write them a check. The money was in the capital projects fund budgeted originally. So when we didn't spend it, all I did is moved it from the allocated project to an unallocated project. So it's still in there. We still have it available. And so Commissioners, I'm happy to do whatever you prefer. We can keep that money in there and pay them over the next two years. Or we can just pay them all at once. If you have any preference on that, otherwise, I would say let's earn a little bit of interest and then pay them because it was really their mistake in not billing us the right amount, and they acknowledged that. And so that's why they were willing to give it to us interest-free for two years. And the money, like I mentioned again, would just be from the capital projects fund. It was money we had already appropriated for it, and then when we didn't spend it, we left it in capital projects, so it's still there to be used.
Okay, Mr. Bollas, your comment?
I like your recommendation.
To keep the money.
Keep the money and make the payments.
Okay, are you good with that, Commissioner Forre?
I'm good with that, yeah.
Great, great. That's, I think you're gonna get three yeses on that then, Scott, so go ahead and do that.
Okay, I'll do that. Now Emily's part, as part of our working with Graviton, who was the consultant that implemented Oracle, they were in charge of designing a way for our file to talk to the insurance company. So for example, Select Health, we send them a file a couple of times a month, and it's supposed to have all the changes with all the employees that went, you know, got married or had a kid or, you know, got divorced or new hire or termination. It's supposed to go through an EDI file exchange. It's supposed to be automatic. It's supposed to just work, and it never has. We're now three years into it. We spend an inordinate amount of time trying to get that file to work. We've worked with our consultants. I just personally, I think it's beyond their skill set. Scott Havy in IT spends an awful lot of time on this. Emily Wild and Katie spend an awful lot of time on this. The solution that our consultant is providing to us is there's actually several companies that do this for a living. We've reached out and talked to several of them. We found one we think would work well for us, and it's basically a thousand dollars, just over a thousand dollars a month. They will do that EDI data file exchange for us. So Scott Havy won't have to spend any more time on it, neither will Emily or anybody else. But we can cover that cost for two thousand and twenty-four, so it's just over a thousand dollars a month, seven thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-four. We can afford that without having a budget change, but it would be an ongoing commitment of about thirteen thousand dollars a year. Truthfully, we're spending that money and time and effort anyway, whether we spend it to a company that does it or we spend it in time and labor ourselves. We're still spending that money. So Commissioners, with your permission, I'd like to do a budget change for two thousand and twenty-five. We won't need it in a change in two thousand and twenty-six, but I would include it in the two thousand and twenty-five, excuse me, I said that backwards. We won't need it in two thousand and twenty-four's budget. I'll need it in two thousand and twenty-five and beyond's budget of thirteen thousand dollars to human resources to pay for this file exchange.
Isn't this a request that you'd bring to us in the normal budget hearing portion of this? I'd certainly hate to. I mean, we've been really careful to make sure that we don't do this, Mr. Park. I find it a little odd that you're bringing it to us now.
Well, I, I'm smiling at that. I think the only difference is that we're covering it for this year, so I'm not asking for you to do it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, there's the test of the care, of course. Yeah, but it is an ongoing expense from here on out.
It is. You are correct, and I do think that we will save county staff and time, but, and I, this, this, I'm doing Emily's pitch for, so.
This would never be Scott's pitch.
Oh.
Actually, I support Emily in this. This, it's a huge amount of time and effort, and it shouldn't be. This is something that should just work.
Mr. Bollas?
Listen, Commissioner Harvey had to hold us back so we wouldn't make any comments before he made that crack. I'm supportive.
Commissioner Forre?
I'm good with that.
Aw, Judas.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Well, sweep the corners and find it.
Absolutely. I have to go to the market.
Yeah. All right, that's, you got three yeses, Scott?
All right, that is all that I have. I will prepare, prepare a budget change and put it through Kissville. You'll see it shortly.
You'll stop sharing your screen so we can go back to our regularly scheduled meeting. That'd be great. Appreciate your input.
I will do that as soon as I can figure out how, but yes.
Great, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on, Commissioners, to the discussion regarding ramp that's with Chris Crockett and Shelley Halasy. One moment till we move the players around. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on with our discussion regarding ramp. We have Ms. Shelley Halasy and Mr. Christopher Crockett. Mr. Crockett, inasmuch as you were listed first, would you please lead?
Sure.
Thank you.
Happy to. Commissioners, we are getting ready to finalize the resolution to put the ramp question on the ballot for this upcoming election to renew the ramp tax. I wanted to clarify something with the commission, just to make sure to see what direction they wanted to go. Previously, ramp was allowed to, it was a, it's a portion of sales tax revenue that's collected to fund cultural facilities, recreational facilities, and zoological facilities, botanical organizations, cultural organizations, and zoological organizations and radio stations in the county.
Well, you tried to say that three times.
Well, I'm about to add another one. My, the ramp statute has since been amended, when we approved it back in twenty fourteen, to now include funding for a botanical organization, cultural organization, or zoological organization to pay for use of a bus or facility rental if that use of the bus or facility rental is in furtherance of the botanical organizations, cultural organizations, and zoological organizations' primary purpose. Wow. I didn't think that that was something that our county was interested in doing, but I wanted to confirm before I put the actual resolution language in the ballot. If that's something that you do want, I can include that in the authorized uses. If not, I'll just stick to that first statement of we use it to fund recreational facilities, cultural facilities, cultural organizations.
Commissioner Bollas, I'll go to you first.
I want to know if you have an opinion on it as a director.
No. I don't want to add a whole lot more to it, but what my question is, is this saying that they could use buses, et cetera, for, like, from one facility to the next, like, say, the dinosaur park was working with the nature park, and they were gonna use a bus? Is that kind of what that was?
Or a bus or a facility rental, as we go along with their organization's primary purpose. But that's something we've never done before.
Yeah, we have not done that before. I mean, I'm not opposed to them using a bus to take kids to and from places, but I just don't know, I just, sorry, don't know if we want to add a whole lot more to what we have.
Talk about kids, though. Talked about a bus, didn't talk about.
I guess one of the questions I have is, I mean, it's super easy for me to include that, but I don't know the impact that'll have when it goes on the ballot as to whether or not people will actually vote for ramps. So you can choose to do one or both.
I like, we're not required under code to put that under state code, are we? I'd like to keep it simple.
I agree. I think if we just keep it the same.
I'm afraid the more you put in.
The more you dilute it, the less.
Yeah, and then people are gonna go, well, I like everything, but I don't like the buses and.
Well, and we already have more applications than we have revenue.
Yeah.
See.
We got her, Shelley's got her hands full now.
And we have a mayor that's talking garbage on ramp, so.
Really?
Are dealing with that.
There's a little misinformation out there about what it funds.
Think the mayors would be out there waving their flag.
You would think, and most of them are, and tonight I will mention that in Waco, I will.
Wow. Okay.
Hopefully that mayor's present.
My vote is to keep it simple.
Yeah, I would just assume. I think you have a consensus to omit that other part.
It is the same.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Great.
Chair, with your permission, I have got to get something from HR before some hearings this afternoon. I have another item at twelve. I can give you a thirty-second update on that.
I think that'd be wonderful.
Is that okay? Commissioners, you okay with that?
If you're okay with that.
I'll have to apologize to Mark. We're gonna go to item number six on our agenda today in a discussion regarding the audit committee policy. Go ahead, Mr. Crockett.
We have three members of the audit committee here, and one of the policies that we have been updating is the structure of the committee. And one of the recommendations that came out of the committee was to expand the committee membership to really so that it resemble, it actually reflected and resembled a sampling of the entire county. And in doing that, we realized that there were some areas that weren't represented. One was the Sheriff's Department. The other one was Culture Parks and Rec, and the other one was the Library, by far our biggest employers in the county, and so we thought it would be beneficial for the committee and to get those members, those departments involved in the activities of other departments and to tap into their expertise and resources to add three additional members to that committee. Sheriff.
Bravo.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I spoke too soon.
So Sheriff Arbonne, Marty Smith, and Linda Waynsgard have all agreed to participate. I told them it was subject to pending your approval. The only other changes that we had is that we're going to switch the audit committee to quarterly meetings instead of every other month. There's also, we've accepted a new community member position.
Oh, yeah.
We're excited about that, and then also sharing drafts of audit reports with the assigned commissioner, just so there's no surprises once the audit's completed so that the commissioner who has that department in their portfolio is aware of what's going on.
For a formality, Commissioner Bollas? You okay with that? Commissioner Forre?
I'll discuss it our last audit committee, so I'm familiar with it. Great. I was a yes vote then, I'm a yes vote now.
And I'm a yes vote now. You got it with all three of us. Thank you.
We'll put it on the commission agenda.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
No problem. We'll see you in a bit.
Great, appreciate that. We'll now move to item number five, which is a discussion regarding elections equipment. We'll take just a moment so we can get our players moved out of the room and moved into the room. We have Mr. Hatch here. Is Ms. Schaefer coming?
She is at the dentist?
No.
Ash Warren called. Apparently, apparently, not gonna make it in time. She wasn't sure if she was gonna be able to make it.
You never are when you go to the dentist.
Okay, Ms. Hatch? Please. Ms.?
All right, okay.
Man, we're glad you're here, Ricky.
I'm asking for money.
For actions. You're not asking for money out of the budget sequence of things, are you?
I am, and interestingly enough, the biggest.
Is Mr. Park still online?
The biggest detractor is magically sick today. Hmm. No, yeah, he, he and I have talked about this a lot, and I'll talk about the reasons why, why we're doing this ask, this out-budget cycle whereas where we've been beating the drum.
We've always, there's always a, there's always a re, an explanation.
Always good reasons, right?
Yeah.
And I'll harpoon my presentation right now by saying, if your answer is no, we'll make it work. So I'm not gonna, not gonna say that this is the.
Go ahead.
The earth is gonna crumble if we don't, if we don't get this. But the reason why now and not during the budget request last year and why I don't think we can wait until next year are a couple of things. We'll go into these a little bit more. First off, we've made some improvements to our processes and some efficiencies that allows us to return some equipment back to the vendor, or basically sell it back to the vendor. They won't give us a check. They'll only give us a credit to new, purchase of new equipment. That's what originally got us starting to think, well, maybe we could take advantage of, we've been wanting this new machine for a while, but that got us thinking, maybe this is, maybe this is a good time. And then the second one was back in March, just a couple of months ago, the state came out with some new audit requirements, some new kind of printing audit requirements. It requires when the ballot is being scanned that the ballot scanner imprint a unique identifier number on that ballot to be used in audit purposes, for audit purposes, which is a great thing. The equipment that we have has that functionality. It's not as robust as we would like it to be. We struggled with that a bit in the presidential primary and anticipate some additional struggle. It, it works, but it's just not as good as we thought. So, and we didn't know about these audit requirements until, that's when they, they came out with those. So now let's go to the, the need and the benefits. Well, I'm just gonna walk you through this. It'll take about five, ten minutes, and then whatever questions you have. We talked about the, the reason why is the new printing and audit requirements from the state. There's a general desire from legislators, from us, to get more results posted more quickly. This machine will help with that because it reduces the amount of time needed to scan ballots because it's so much faster than the other machines. It also will increase our security. It adds a two-factor authentication requirement to log in as well as it can now complies with the newly established upgraded voter voluntary voter, voluntary voter system guidelines done by the U.S. Election Assistance Commission. They just approved those last year. And very few pieces of equipment actually adhere to those requirements, and this is one of the pieces of equipment that adheres to that. It actually doubles the accuracy of the scanning. Now, I say that, they're already super accurate. The standards to which our current machines are held to is you're only allowed one error out of every one and a half million ballot scanned. That's now doubled to three million, one error allowed out of three million ballots scanned. So it doubles. It's impressive, but not super, that's not big. We're not gonna see a big change in that. And then lastly, our current scanners are on the decline. They're middle-aged. They're six, six out of the, about a ten-year life cycle. So we would have to buy them before the two thousand and twenty-eight presidential election for sure. So they, so that, and that's, you know, six out of ten is not horrible, but it's starting to get there. And that coupled with the other things that, that I'll talk about, I think necessitates the, the need necessitates getting them earlier or makes it, makes it wise. So why, why mid-year? The new audit requirements, the returned equipment that has to be credited towards purchasing new equipment. They, they won't cut us a check and they won't reduce like our maintenance and things like that. And so I thought, well, maybe we just wait until November. We do it for the, you know, we ask later in the year and do it in November, but you never want to use a critical piece of equipment for the first time in the big election, the big twenty-four election. That's why we're asking early, so we can get the equipment again before June. So we can give it a good run at a less heavily used, less critical election, being the primary election. We will get some savings from this. We'll get thirty-three hundred dollars a year in reduced labor because of the efficiencies as well as a reduction in maintenance equipment costs for the equipment that we're returning and the two scanners that this one piece, one scanner would, would replace. That gives it about a ten-year ROI, so basically just from those savings alone, assuming we didn't have any others that would pay, pay for that equipment, the upfront portion of the equipment. Okay, so here's the request. The purchase price of the new equipment is a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars if we bought it today. We could get it, well, in plenty of time to have it set up, tested, calibrated for the June election. But we have some credits. The, the credits from the equipment that we will be returning and that this equipment would replace comes to about, depending on how much we could sell them, twenty, a minimum of twenty thousand, but possibly forty thousand between those. Labor savings and tightening our belt elsewhere because we think this will be dramatically beneficial. We have one other line item that we're willing to, to take that and devote it toward the one-time cost. So that'd be fifteen thousand, and we're likely to get some more reimbursement from the state for increase in security. That could be as high as thirty thousand dollars. We just don't know that, so I'm not taking that into account. But we would know that after we make the purchase and after the other counties have turned in their reimbursement requests. Generally, not all counties do that, and so there's money left over. So that would be a total budget change request for this year, taking those credits out of about a hundred thousand dollars. Now, a hundred thousand is kind of a lot. If that's too much for your liking, there's a second option. That's a lease-to-own option. And that would require a one-time, and that hundred thousand is one-time. If we did this lease-to-own option, the one-time change would be twenty-five thousand dollars increased to this year's budget. I could only do that if we know that we're gonna be able to purchase it next year, so that would be an eighty thousand dollar commitment one-time purchase for next year's budget. And then just other things to consider is between twenty-three and twenty-four, elections actually reduced our budget, our ongoing budget by seventy-seven thousand dollars, and we did that, and I just mentioned that because we're really trying to be careful with our money. We're trying to, we balance the things that we felt were unnecessary budget line items, and so we wanted to return that to the county. So it's not like we're coming and asking for the world and gonna do the same thing next year. We really have a culture of trying to save for the county, and Scott likes that. So really, the last thing is that this is increasing our security. It increases the accuracy. It gets our results sooner, and it helps, helps us better comply with newly established audit requirements for the equipment. And that's my spiel. That's what I've got for you.
Commissioner Forre?
That's quite a spiel. So this is all one-time?
Yes.
I wish Scott Park was here. I think last time we talked, we had a pretty good amount in our one-time.
In our contingency, yeah.
In our contingency. Just one question. So you said that regardless, by two thousand and twenty-eight, we'll have to replace it one way or the other. So what's the chances between now and two thousand and twenty-eight? And again, I'll be long gone, but. and 2028? And again, I'll be long gone, but what's the chance that this machine happened to be replaced or, I mean, it's always the newest and best and highest.
Right.
You know, they change so fast. Are we gonna be doing this again in 2026 or?
2028.
2028, I mean.
I'd. Yeah, that's a good question. I, it takes about two years for a new system to get certified.
Okay.
So I think 26 would not be likely. Um, and the equipment that we bought in 2018, these two 450 scanners, um, they have been around already for about four years, so they have a pretty decent life cycle.
Right.
Um, and, and the cost of getting new equipment certified is pretty, uh, cost prohibitive, and so the vendors don't do that very often. Uh, I've been in 13 years, and I've seen, um, um, the 450s came out shortly after I started, let's see, I wanna say 2014 is when they came out, and then we have this nine, uh, 950. So it's, I suspect that there will be a new one, maybe by '28, but certainly not by '26.
Okay.
It's hard, it's hard to know what they're gonna do.
And under your lease-to-own, is it the same price or do they, what's the?
It's like, it's cheaper.
5,000 one.
5,000 one.
Yeah.
It says 25 and 80.
Uh, yeah, that's 105, but that's with those credits.
Oh, it's with.
So it's basically 140.
Like, that's better till break.
So it goes off.
So the 100, okay, so it's 5,000 for the lease.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. Okay, that's my question to Mr. Chair.
Hey, Mr. Commissioner Bolus.
I, the only question I had was about the total amount for the lease, because I didn't realize that that included the, the credits.
Yeah. It has a, it shows like 30, 30, 28,000 to rent for June, 30 some odd thousand to rent for November, and then 78 to purchase next year, uh, to buy out, to purchase it outright.
So explain to me, our labor savings and tightening our belt. Is that a given or is that, if we can tighten our belt?
The tightening the belt.
We're getting into the, you know, summer season, which you can lose some weight in the summer, but I don't know how tight we're gonna get it.
Yeah. What that came from is we have a, a line item in our budget that is, um, voter outreach.
Okay.
Um, and it's, it's more voter education, and in that, in the past, we've used that for, um, uh, a texting, it's a text-to-cure option. So if, if someone forgets to sign their envelope or the signature doesn't match, we give them an option to be able to return that, um, electronically. Um, in the past, that's cost $10,000 a year. We just, um, we piloted last year, we piloted doing that for a cost of about $300 a year, uh, an in-house solution that's equally as secure and just as robust. Um, and this year we decided to fully go in on that. And in fact, Lauren presented down at UACT just this past week on how to successfully implement this using JAW forms, which is dramatically cheaper and just as secure as the, the solution we had. So we have that $10,000 that, um, I think we could, uh, easily pull out and put worth this one-time cost.
Okay.
Suggestions, uh, decisions, uh, motions, uh, ideas?
Well, you know, I hate budget changes.
You know, me too. We've really, really, not just worked hard, we've done exactly what the clerk auditors asked us to do and really had a hard time going mid-year, but this seemed.
And that, that's why I totally understand. If in the end you say, no, just not gonna do it, we'll make it work, we'll, we'll be okay. Um, and I told Scott that as well, because he pushed back way harder than you have so far. He's like, tell me why. Tell me why, he says, and, and I said, Scott, I want you to come and, um, and you can be the dissenting voice, you can be the pushback, because we need that in, in these kinds of situations. So I'm not gonna hate anybody if you guys say no. And I do see.
Will you put this on your 25 request if we say no?
Um, probably. We'll probably put it on 25 and, um, yeah, because then we'd have a good, a good year of use before the 26.
Well, I don't wanna be the hard Eddie here, but I think I will be. I would just assume, you know, and again, I'm not gonna die on my sword on this, but I would, I would think this would be more appropriate because of the 100,000, which, you know, I, we're gonna do it, I just seem to do the 100,000. That's a pretty big chunk out of our contingency.
Yeah.
I would rather adjust, address this as we look at the entire budget in 25, and if, you know, unless there's some reason that that you can correct me on, that I don't see that this will cause us any major problems with the 2024 election. I mean, it won't be as fast, it may not, but, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, it won't cause, it, it won't cause us to have big issues. Um, we'll have the, the issues that we've had in the past, and, and we can figure out ways to, to work through those if we need.
Anyway, that's my preference. I could easily be outvoted on this. It won't hurt my feelings too bad.
Mr. Bolus.
Well, I wouldn't die on the sword either, Gage, for this, but I, when I, when I know what's happening in your office and how, how efficient everything already is, it doesn't seem urgent to me. I understand the improvement, but the piece of equipment that you, the, the scanners you currently have that are in their sixth year of 10, it just doesn't seem urgent.
You know, okay, thank you. I like it. It benefits the election cycle that I currently have, happen to be in, but I, but I.
Wait, is that a conflict?
Uh, but it, it's not a conflict, but I think I'm gonna support the other two, uh, requests of the commissioners on this one. The, the only thing that is, is that we, we're, Ricky, I wanna say yes um, because there are legitimate requests mid-year, and we really, really are careful to do that. And if something else comes through, I don't want there to be, hey, well, gosh, why did they approve that one and not this one?
Yeah.
Um, but I, if, I know you need to do it now so you can get something under your belt. There's another side of me that says, you know, you have something that's already working good, it's proven. I think, no. Well, I have to say, I think, because I haven't been to a lot of other counties. I've been to other counties and certainly none outside the state. But I do believe that our elections department is the finest one elections department, not just in the state, but amongst the top in the country. Uh, I just wanna be super careful. I know this would help a little more, but I wouldn't mind seeing a municipality go through, do some municipal elections, getting ready for 2026, but certainly 2028, and then we'll have a very good, robust system and planning on it better then.
Yeah.
So I think we could, I, I think, let's just, let's just pause. And maybe that equipment, by the time it gets a little older, like a computer, maybe it's gonna come down in pride because the new, the new, uh, well, the, uh, the new flux capacitor might be a better price.
That's right. Yeah. Okay. All right.
Okay.
Sounds good. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
All right.
Did we save you time?
We're on schedule.
Okay.
Wow.
In fact, I would like to motion to saunter. I'd like to motion to saunter for 15 minutes, please.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're sauntering for at least 15. We'll come back live when we're done.
Welcome back, we're gonna cease to saunter and we're gonna move on to item number. Do I need a motion for that? Is that a parliamentary procedure?
You're supposed to.
Okay, I'll take a motion to cease to saunter.
So.
Second.
Okay. And second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries. We've now ceased to saunter officially. Item number seven is the discussion regarding the rezon and development agreement with Winston Park subdivision phase two. Charlie Ewer, Sean Wilkinson, the incomparable Rick Grover, and me and Kyo. Well, Charlie, Charlie's not here. I guess that concludes this discussion. We'll wait till he.
And this is Charlie, so.
That's all. Rick, go ahead.
Well, we need Charlie.
Oh, you do?
He's the one doing that, so he's supposed to be here.
Well, we'll just pause for another minute and check that while Charlie comes in the room. I'll mute for just a moment. Charlie, we're back. We've patiently been waiting for your arrival. Thank you for running the stairs as we can hear you.
I suppose I can hear that.
This is a discussion regarding the rezon and development agreement for Winston Park subdivision phase two.
And we've got the developers coming up the elevator right now. So let me hand a couple of things out to you guys. So, sorry about the print. Backside is upside down, but that's what happens when you rush the printer. Mark wrote plan, Commissioner Bullis. Oh, sorry. So these are excerpts taken straight out of the general plan. Thank you.
Welcome to the room. Go ahead and sit down at the table right there if you would. Identify yourselves, please.
I'm Wade Rumsey.
Mr. Rumsey?
And I'm Igor Mexum, and we're here on behalf of Winston Park.
Great. Spell your first name for me.
I G O R.
Okay.
Igor.
And ways was it?
Wade Rumsey, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Ewer is gonna lead out on our discussion. Charlie, go ahead, please.
So in one of our last work sessions talking about Navy Meadow subdivision, commissioners, you had a few questions about compliance with the general plan and how we're holding developers accountable for what's in that general plan. In today's meeting, I suspect you might perhaps push it back on us a little bit for being a little bit too asking for too much perhaps. I'm just trying to look at the general plan and implement the general plan in ways that we think would be both helpful in the way the general plan is written, but also trying to be responsive to your guys' requests to make sure that if we are doing rezones, the R115 zone isn't just the default, it is after the developer has offered some pretty good considerations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The planning commission has reviewed this proposal and they've offered a favorable recommendation. But they've got some stipulations, some conditions that they want with their recommendation. Before we dive in on some of those stricter standards, I just wanted to make sure we went over some of the things that were in the general plan. Make sure you guys know what's there. Make sure you're comfortable with what's there, if not giving us some direction otherwise. This first page here, I'm just gonna start with the third paragraph. Actually, second paragraph. Smart growth principles usually require more thoughtful development patterns that more effectively consider the needs of the greater good. They're often more expensive to implement and as such are not typically volunteered by a developer or otherwise stimulated by private market forces. Often, the government's application of smart growth principles can appear to be a governmental overreach in its impact on the free market. However, the position that the planning area is in at this time essentially defies that appearance by enabling new densities above those already entitled to land. The county is enhancing the value of new development, a value that would not otherwise be available to the owner. As long as the smart growth principles that are applied to new development do not substantially negate this new value, the net outcome still results in a positive profitable margin to each landowner. When we look at that, we've, I think it's important, and I think Commissioner Forde hit the nail on the head last time we were talking, that we know that these reasons aren't necessarily the default. We're planning for reasons to happen as long as good things happen for the community. So how do those smart growth principles apply? So following pages, I just lay out the eight different or seven different smart growth principles. Number one, a street connectivity. So making frequent street connections, few cul-de-sacs, as few cul-de-sacs as you can is important. Number two is pathway and trail connectivity. With both number one and number two, we've already adopted a connectivity incentivized subdivision standard. If you aren't asking for a rezon, it's a voluntary thing, so developer can volunteer to do the connectivity. If you are asking for a rezon, we're asking each of those developers to volunteer at the front, the front end. So it now becomes a requirement if they sign the development agreement that says it is. Okay, so pathway trail connectivity is the next one. On the following page, you'll see Parks Recreation Act of Transportation Pathway. That's the map that is adopted, but that's not it. That's not all that is expected of developers who are developing out here. These are just kind of the backbone pathway and park connections. And so as we look at these, these are the meaningful and effective pathway connections from like a backbone pathway network. But then we got the ones that are inside of these subdivisions that we also wanna see connections. When it comes to street connectivity and pathway connectivity to comply with the ordinance that's adopted, you have to have one street intersection every 660 feet, and that's a standard block length. And you have to have one pathway intersection every 400 feet. And so that's, that's a we say 660 is the max and 400 is the max. We try and encourage developers to go somewhere in between. Most of the time, they're very encouraged to they're incentivized to go to the maximum because that means they're building less. But if you think about it, one block length is 660 feet and then a mid-block crossing is about 330 feet or so. So that's kind of where we said, all right, let's do about 400, give them some ability to get mid-block crossings for pedestrians that isn't necessarily at the exact half. Okay? We've also adopted cross-sections for pathways, both street adjacent pathways as well as subdivision internal pathways. And so we'd be obligating each developer to follow those standards as well. Smart growth principle three, open space and recreation facilities. We'll have a good discussion about that with those project here. But we know we had a good conversation about two work sessions ago, I think, about open space costs. These guys came in and started talking with us before the $7,500 cost or donation was discussed or implemented. So in their development agreement, we're talking about $2,000 per lot instead of 7,500. Because that's the number that the park district asked of them from the, from the beginning. And we're here midstream. If you guys wanted to ship midstream, you can, but I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna tell the developer that we were going to, these gentlemen, that we were gonna ship midstream. So you guys have the choice to do that if you want to. Number four, dark sky considerations. So we already have an outdoor lighting code. It's generally applicable in the Ogden Valley. We are now making it applicable in the Western Weber area through these development agreements. Number five, culinary and secondary water conservation. We know that we're in a drought despite the fact that it's raining outside and that it has been raining for the last couple of years, it seems. We are in a drought. We know Weber Basin has already started implementing some new water-wise rules and we've helped them implement some in our code. The development agreement that we're looking at and all these development agreements, by the way, these are, we're trying to make these standard through, for all the development groups that you're looking at. That's why I think it's important we look at these today because this is the first one we're bringing all of these smart growth principles to you. And so everyone that follows this will probably follow the same standard. So what you guys choose for this project will probably kind of set that tone. You'll obviously have flexibility on which of them to do something different, but we just wanna make sure we're giving you what you're hoping for. So culinary and secondary water conservation, one of the things in the development agreement that we're asking for them is to go above and beyond. One way of doing that is to implement smart watering devices. Smart watering devices, access the internet, they can tell, they can adjust themselves based off of whether it's raining or whether it's excessively hot. And so Weber Basin actually has some rebate programs or did, when I bought mine, I had some rebate programs. I think you buy a $100 smart watering device and it's just your sprinkler controller. And they give you like a $50 rebate, which makes it just as expensive as the standard device. And then six and seven, six is emissions and air quality and seven is renewable energy. Emissions and air quality, we know there was a bill floated last year, the unit for the legislature about the possibility of maybe phasing out the use of gas appliances. It didn't pass, obviously, for a number of reasons, but one thing that we're hoping to work with each developer on is providing appliances, if they are gas appliances, that are, that are at a higher efficiency rating than the standard, what the standard building code would require. So at a minimum, we're asking for 95% efficiency on furnaces and water heaters. But we're also asking when they bring in, when the builders bring in the, the reds checks, the what am I?
Application?
It's the building permit application. They have to submit a reds check for each house, which essentially tells us how efficient the home is. There's a, there's a minimum efficiency threshold that the building code has implemented. The state, I believe, implemented a higher efficiency threshold and then rolled it back, I think, because of some pushback from, from some builders and some concerns about how those higher efficiencies will work. In the Western Weber area, we're hoping in the long term, we can provide these higher efficiency homes. Applying this through the development process at the very front end is the most cost-effective way of doing it. Trying to retrofit homes later is much more challenging to do. So we're looking at higher efficiency homes in, in general. And then number seven, and this may be the, this is probably a good sticking point because we've had a number of developers really pushing back hard on renewable energies. Solar panel rooftops is probably the best way we can get renewable energy feedback from residential users. Now, we did ask the Heritage Group on a project that hasn't quite reached your level yet to provide solar rooftop homes. They said that's 10 to 20,000 home. If you're asking for $7,500 a lot for open spaces, you're asking for an additional 10 to 20,000. I mean, that's, how are you gonna get, the big question is how are you gonna get affordable housing, that kind of thing? So this one is a big ask, it's a big expense. Smart thermostats, smart water controllers, higher efficiency appliances, those are actually pretty nominal expenses when it comes to building the home. But putting solar panels on the rooftop is, is a much bigger expense. In addition to these, these are the standard smart growth principles, these seven. In addition to them, the general plan also has, missed all the time. Also.
Four thirty, you're fine.
Okay. Also has some additional smart growth principles, and these are called exemplary smart growth principles. The plan says implement the smart growth principles. It doesn't say all of them, doesn't say do all of them. It doesn't say do none of them. It just says do some of them at least, do, do them. So you guys have the option of how many and how much you're asking for. The plan also says if you do the, these additional exemplary smart growth principles, there may be some ability for the county to consider additional density to incentivize that to happen. So these are a provision for a wide array of housing options. Homes with higher efficiency ratings than required by building codes, homes that have solar panel rooftops. So these ones, the renewable energy, the standard ones, emissions and air quality and renewable energy, they don't specifically say build solar rooftops. They don't specifically say put in higher efficiency. They just say find ways to do this kind of stuff. The exemplar ones say if we're following these rules, you will do these things. And then the last one is providing provisions that create attractive communities for long-term that can Uh, that can create a, a distinctive sense of place. And what that means is, uh, let's make things look attractive, let's make these look like decent neighborhoods. Uh, the more attractive your neighborhoods are, the higher your resiliency, uh, it's gonna be in the long term. And the less likely these, some of these neighborhoods will go by the wayside in terms of, uh, you know, fifty to a hundred years from now turning into light. So with that in mind, we've worked through a development agreement with, um, uh, our applicants or developers. Um, and they've been great to work with, by the way, um. This particular project. There's, there's two requests that are coming through with this project. One is a change to the general plan. And the reason that there's a request for a change to the general plan is because, uh, Winston Park was originally plotted as a, uh, cluster subdivision. Or was it a P R U D, or P R U D subdivision? There was open space that was permanently preserved in favor of the county in exchange for a little bit higher densities in the A-one zone. Okay, so on the, uh, future, uh, land use map. The portion of the property that was reserved as, or preserved as open space, that was, um. Colored green for Parks Recreation and Open Space for the future. So. The expectation of that property would be Parks Rec or Open Space. The applicant is looking to put some, some, uh, homes on there. The planning commission generally, it seemed like the majority of them, uh, at least through their recommendation, said, you know. It's just a bunch of weeds unless it's being owned and operated by the Park District. It's, there's not a whole lot we can do about. We can't force someone to farm it. And even if we could force someone to farm it, we'd be forcing someone to farm in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And so they're a little bit concerned about that, um. Uh, the general plan talks about preserving agricultural spaces, but doing it in areas that aren't in the middle of residential neighborhoods. So I think the planning commission overall would agree that this property is better suited for residential development as long as. Some of these higher givings and, um, uh, community givings are, are offered by the developer. So technically today, the developer has zero development rights on this property. And so one thing that we've asked the developer do is consider the implementation of a small park. Uh, which they've shown on their, uh, concept plan, as well as a donation to the Park District. And we were talking about a two-thousand-dollar donation at that time. It wouldn't just be the two thousand dollars per new home, though. We'll have to look at it as two thousand dollars per each home that exists in Winston Park. So kind of unraveling the P R U D idea. And looking at it as if it's a, a, a fresh idea for the entire subdivision. So it'd be two thousand dollars. There are fifty-four lots out there right now.
How many of them have homes on them? Probably fifteen, would you say?
Fifteen to twenty. They, they, they started or they built.
So you said fifty-four homes?
Fifty-four red, uh, lots right now in phase one.
Fifteen are started.
Yeah.
What's the open space right now? What's the cluster space?
There's an acre and a half at the back, in the middle of the residential area.
The, uh, the, the portion that you're gonna build on is, do you remember how many acres?
Phase two?
Yeah, phase two.
It turned that parcel, the total overall space, not fifteen, ten, ten to twelve acres maybe.
That's, that's.
Listen for excellent.
Yes.
Probably ran that type on, I guess.
Okay.
So ten to twelve acres that are dedicated toward cluster open space.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, if they change, that would change to be, uh, most of it would be, uh, residential properties. There still would be. Uh, as of right now, there still would be a, a park preserved for, uh, on that, uh. On a portion of the open space. We've talked to Lance in the Park District. They said that they're okay with picking it up. It's a smaller property. It's not the five-acre standard that they are used to, but they've got the bigger park that they've, uh, they're planning on down the road. Um, um, Taylor Landing, it's, it's within close proximity. So getting back and forth to provide maintenance on this shouldn't be too big of a deal.
What's the average lot size of the fifty-four that are existing?
One-third acre lots. They're all one-third acre, plus there's some half-acre lots in there as well.
So when we're looking at unraveling the P R U D that was, um, previously plotted. And maybe applying the new R one fifteen rules to the entire parcel, which is forty acres, would, that includes phases one and two. Um, they could get a potential of about a hundred and fifteen lots out of the property. They got about fifty-four right now. And so they've got a potential for another forty-six or so. Um, as of right now, they've, uh, plotted out about thirty, uh, lots. The planning commission is looking at the provision for a wide variety of housing options, and they're saying, well. Developer, you're leaving twenty or so lots on the table. Uh, what if you, what if you turned one of those lots into a, a townhome lot and, and put a few townhomes in there? Um, developer.
Talking about. Density that also includes senior development, not just townhomes, aren't you, Charlie?
Yes, this conversation started before that request came through.
Okay.
But we can have, we can, uh, implement that through this conversation now.
I know the density is about the same, but you know, we're, at least, I don't know where these two are, but that's where I am.
Well, we have an opportunity, um, the developer was just talking to me a few minutes ago about some other opportunities, so I wanted to walk you through those ideas.
We have put in some, uh, low-cost living. Talking about low-cost living, with the cost coming out, but we have, I think that was originally suggested by you guys. So we've got a, a small lot there with some of the low-cost living that we plan for you.
Okay.
But then we're looking also at this planning development as well.
So in the development agreement, it says that, um, the developer agrees to do, um, at least one townhome building. With six townhome units, but has the allowance to do two, up to two townhome buildings with twelve units. The only thing the planning commission was concerned about, that number one, they wanted those townhomes closer to eighteen hundred, uh, south. Just the higher density being closer to the transportation corridor, but they also wanted to make sure that, that the townhomes faced away from eighteen hundred. So it's right on, the, the townhome property is right on eighteen hundred, but they wanted to face into the subdivision and have the rear of the building, the townhome building. Look like a single-family residence. And so as you're driving past on eighteen hundred south, you shouldn't be able to tell that that's a town. And so we've got some architectural standards that's in the development agreement that, uh, that the applicant is, is working with their architects on. So they could potentially have two of those buildings. They, we, we would just ask them to look different, different than each other. And probably avoid just the repeated townhome pattern.
Right.
So it looks a little bit more like a, the back of a, a standard residency you can see there. Um, as far as, uh, provision for a wide, wider variety of housing options, um. I talked to the developer a little bit about this, uh, in the development agreement, there is, uh. There's a caveat to the solar panel idea, and that is that if the square footage of the homes. Uh, or of a home is less than eighteen hundred square feet, or deed restricted for moderate income. We wouldn't apply the solar panel idea. Um, I haven't shown this to the developer yet, but I went through the development agreement. And I kind of pulled out all of the things that would make, uh, building and construction, uh. More challenging because of the higher threshold that we're asking for and, and more costly. Wha- what I put on there was, uh, in the development agreement is that they don't have to do any of those higher cost things. If it's deed restricted for moderate income housing, or, uh, if it's eighteen hundred square feet or less. Just wanna make sure you guys are okay with that. So that means that they're not looking at twenty thousand dollars per rooftop for solar panels. Um, and, and they have a, a few other things they can have some cost savings on. Um. Townhomes. Okay, one other thing. When this subdivision was originally plotted, if it was plotted today. Um, not as a cluster, but as in the R one fifteen zone, we would have put a few more street intersections in there. Uh, specifically ones that go to the west. We now have a developer who's picking up the property on the west, or already has the property on the west side, and is gonna be asking for some homes to go in there. The property to the west of this property is phases, uh. Four and five open space for Taylor Landing. So Heritage is now asking for phases four and five to be allowed to be constructed as their phase six. You guys will see that soon. Um, in exchange for them offering, um, like donating another twenty-two and a half acres or something like that to the Park District. For a total of a thirty-two acre park over there. Our district likes the idea. Um, we're still working out the details with them, but, um, if we're gonna be putting homes over there. These guys have, uh, homes on their side. There's no street connection between the two subdivisions. So we've asked the developer in the development agreement, we've carved out an option. The option is if the developer can either buy back or buy back a portion of one of the lots that's on that western boundary. To put either a pathway or a street connection going over there. Then there, uh, the open space and park requirements in the development agreement, we would, we would waive those, we would lift those. My intention there is to make sure that they've got sufficient motivation financially to go work with the owners of that property, of those properties. Making sure that there is, um, street connections. Um, and you, they just mentioned they're in negotiation with the property owners right now. On that subject. Um, when we were looking at smart growth implementation principles, street connectivity. Their original configuration didn't lend to good street connections to this phase two, to the open space area. For good reason. I, if it's open space, you don't need streets to connect to it. Um, that was a, a sticking point for the planning commission and for us, that there weren't good interconnections. They actually went back and bought back two lots, um, to make street connections to the current phase one as well. So they've done some of the heavy lifting already to, to make that possible. Um, and so I, from all the different angles of. Why should we allow this open space to become residential? I think they're compensating for the loss of that open space. Um, in terms of providing a park fee or a park, not fee, park donation for every lot that they're gonna be creating. Um, as well as providing for some moderate income housing, or excuse me, some townhome housing that the community needs, which is. Um, that missing middle housing that the general plan talks about, um, and providing street connections to, from their existing phase one to their phase two. And so in my opinion, I think it does reach that threshold, and I think the planning commission agreed with that, um, on this subject. Any questions for us or for the developer? We're almost done, um, minting that development agreement, and so we can get you the, the written language of that pretty quickly.
So, when does this need to be? Actually, right, you say you're right at the end of the development agreement now.
We're working in the details of it right now.
Okay.
And so we could potentially have it on your agenda next week, if you guys are comfortable. If you wanna wait a little bit, we can wait.
Sean, Rick, Liam, do either, if any of you have any comments, Mr. For comments, and then I'll go Commissioner Bolos.
Well, um, I think, I think you pretty much know where I'm headed, which is. You know, the cluster subdivision, in my opinion, didn't make a lot of sense. That's why we went with the general plan.
Right.
It just didn't do us any good. It created weeds or whatever without benefit of the public. What we're facing today is we need affordable lots, and I'm assuming. That the planning commis- mission have looked at that and said, okay, how can we drive down the cost of this? And, and the solar panels is great, but again, who pays for that? It's our kids and grandkids that now have to put another twenty or twenty-five thousand. Uh, I would rather have kind of follow the governor's plan, which was, you know, good infrastructure makes good development. Do you have roads? Do you have internet? You know, do you have water and sewer and secondary water? And do you have principles that you can apply to, you know, and your conservation is part of that? So that's, that's kind of where I'm here. If, if you can show me that, I probably don't have, uh, a huge issue with it. Uh, along with the Park District now. Um, uh, to have a two-acre park there on top of a thirty-two-acre park, I don't know if that makes a lot of sense.
No, yes.
So.
We've talked to the Parks Department last week about that.
I mean, we're, we're getting, I'm afraid we're gonna get so many parks out there, and then they're gonna pocket parks. We, we know what these parks cost, right?
Yep, yeah.
You've done the study on that. Uh, to have a two-acre park when you have one fairly close, a large park. I would rather see that put into some type of connectivity or infrastructure that benefits the entire county, whatever that is.
Well, as I explained to the Parks Department, if you've got a third acre lot, you want your kids on the property. You're gonna have playground in, in your property.
Right.
If you've got an apartment, you need a park.
That's.
So most of these lots, the fifty-four already, are one-third acre lots. There's a number of one-third acre lots in the thirty lots. And then if we were to do the townhouses, which we'd like to do, let's say we said, you're talking about twenty, around about twenty. On four acres is what I call low density for parks. And if they're built in a building, there's a lot of land around those buildings. For kids to create their own park environment. So most of the people wanna be able to have it in their own property, not necessarily go to the park near, you know, around the corner or up the street where they've gotta be supervised.
I don't disagree. So, one last question, if I might, Mr. Chair.
Please, go ahead.
When we talk about price ranges, and I know you can't quote me chapter and verse on this, but what, what's your price point? Well, for those townhomes.
Well, the townhouses will be cheaper than the houses, because obviously the land cost will, will come down.
Right.
But, um, at the moment, um, we've got a spec home up there for just under six hundred and eighty thousand. So I'd imagine the townhouses will be somewhere in the fours, maybe high fours. The only reason we do that is to provide that variety of, of not necessarily very low-cost housing, but a variety of houses. From a single home to townhouses, which are less expensive and more affordable. But you don't have any there. There's nothing around there.
Yeah, yeah.
So commissioners are, uh, every developer that we've been.
Be careful with time here, Coot, Charlie.
Okay, oh, good, we're right there. Uh, every developer that we've been talking to about this, uh, standard development agreement. Um, they've, uh, they're kind of scratching their heads a little bit, saying, man, that is a lot more than we thought it would be. Um, in fact, uh, uh, Chris Crockett gave me a little bit of a hard time, uh, our own attorney said, man, you're asking for the moon from these guys. And my response is, well, the general plan says to do it, to, to look for something in this, in this realm. Um, and, uh, I figure if we don't ask you guys. If you wanted to, to do it all, I mean, we wouldn't, if you don't ask, it's, the answer's always no, right? So I hear probably not solar panels. Any other thoughts on that?
Mr. Bolos.
Um, I just wanna go back to a quick question from the beginning, and hopefully just a quick answer from you. And that is, um, you, you went through all the narrative of the general plan, and then your next comment was, this is a deviation from the general plan. So you know how I feel about that? So I want you to explain that to me.
So the, the deviation is, uh. It's, it's not a deviation from the smart growth principles, but it is a deviation from the color that's on the map. The color that's on the map is, is open space. The reason why we colored it open space was because it was a cluster subdivision with permanently preserved open space back in.
What was the acreage on that?
Uh, about twelve acres, twelve. And we did that with all of the cluster subdivisions, all of their open spaces, we colored on the map as green. The, oh, go ahead.
Can I ask you a question? That open space, you talked about weeds and stuff, so. The cluster subdivisions that are noted on the map, that open space, who does that belong to?
Um, it's, usually it's privately owned open space, and so oftentimes it's for the end of the farmer, right, future? It's not HOA managed or maintained.
And it doesn't belong to the county?
And it doesn't belong to the county. You know, we have a conservation easement on it all.
Okay, I'd answered that. I got the rest of what you just said.
Okay, I'm gonna, sorry. I'm gonna be a little more of a, uh. First off, uh, Igor and Wade, thank you so much for considering your development in Weber County. Um, I, we appreciate you investing here, and this is a place that we really love. The fact, too, that you got a recommendation, great to work with from staff, that matters a whole bunch. To, at least to me. Uh, being respectful of staff and going through the process is difficult. Um. I am a little more, uh, let me tell you kind of where I am on this, Charlie, and this is for staff now. So I want you to, but now that you're in the room, I want you to hear this from me. First off, when you get back to what the governor said, they wanna. I grew up in an area that where the lot size was five and six thousand square feet, but we were in a single-family home. We had one carport, no garage, and it was maybe nine hundred square feet. Some of the big ones had eleven hundred square feet, unfinished basement. Remember doing it ourselves. We don't build that product anymore, because why would we? Because you can make so much more money. Uh, but that's, if you're gonna do some higher density, the townhome is not an option for me. I don't like them. And, but, uh, starter home, single-family dwelling, two-bedroom, one-bath is. Okay, with a little bit of grass in the back or whatever, just a single-family dwelling. Um. This is what we do here today is gonna set the tone, because there's a lot of cluster subdivisions out there. I wanna be incredibly careful here. Uh, because if we do it for one, I'm not gonna set a precedence. The Park District came in and said, look, we gotta have seventy-five-hundred dollars a lot. Moving forward, that's what it's gotta be, seventy-five-hundred dollars a lot. I du- didn't hear in the presentation, other than they're gonna take the, the additional, uh, sixty lots, they're gonna put in there. Over the fifteen, they're, they're gonna take and go back and say those others. So that's two. What you're saying is you're gonna do two thousand dollars a lot, take the two thousand from before. That's four thousand dollars a lot. Basically, kind of, generally on the new lots, but none on the others. So I'm not, I'm not there there, because. I wanna support that seventy-five-hundred dollars a lot. So I'm not, I'm not there there, because I want to support that seventy-five hundred dollars a lot. I don't care about that little pocket park. I like Commissioner Thor what he said about putting it into infrastructure and connectivity. Like connectivity is huge, street connectivity, pathways and streets are important to me. I talked about the six thousand single family lots entitlement to homeowner occupied. And for thirty, fifty years, that's a big deal.
Except for the smaller, the smaller lots.
Smaller ones. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna come below a third of an acre, you're gonna, I hope that in that same breath, in that same sentence, maybe only separated with a comma, not a period, is a, yeah, of course, of course, they'll have entitlements on them for thirty, fifty, seventy years. Okay? Because I don't want, I don't want investors coming in and being able to, I want, I want, I would love to have young families be able to build wealth, and they do that through real estate. And so that's kind of where I am, uh, uh, not votes that we've made there. I don't have a, gosh. I thought this, you know, when you guys were teaching me about this six and seven years ago, I worried about these, and you, that's exactly why you said, what, these, these, uh, cluster subdivisions. You're exactly right, but here it is. This is gonna slap us right hard in the face.
And we got.
So I can't make a decision on this today. Uh, un- until you come back with those types of things for me. Maybe you got two votes somewhere else, but I'm not, I'm not there.
You want a work session again to talk about how to fix these?
For me, absolutely.
Okay, sounds good.
And I'm not deaf on the townhome. I mean, if you look at where people need to start, typically the, you know, chain, what we call the housing ladder, starts off with rental, then it kind of moves up to a single family lot. I think so, even though I'm not, I kind of struggle with, with townhomes in that area. It all depends on what they look like and how it fits in. So I'd want to see, you talked about putting some type of elevation, some type of requirements. But I don't want, I don't want to go down eighteen hundred, not that I go there much, but see the same thing I see on Wall Avenue. It's gotta have, it's gotta have a look to it that encourages, you know, if you can come up with a product, it's a smaller lot on one level home. Um, you know, I'm, I'm probably better with that, but I'm not deaf on townhomes if they're done right.
Right. Can I just ask, uh,
Go ahead.
Commissioner, sorry, I don't know your name.
Jim Harvey.
Jim Harvey. Jim, so you're dead against townhouses, and you said you'd prefer to see a small lot with a smaller home, more affordable. So how small can we get the lot then, if we don't do townhouses? Uh, how small a lot in that park area that we, that we'd be an extra lots in? Because I think you said to us, it was about six thousand feet, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's what the, the.
Which is still pretty big for a small home.
How big are, how big are those, how, how big are the houses? For instance, in some of the other areas that are like that, in South Ogden or the Terrace, I'm familiar with it. Some of those other homes that are built in the fifties and the sixties, where they had a, a whole bunch of these two bedroom, three bedroom, one bath homes. How big are those lots?
Around six thousand.
Okay.
Six to seventy-five hundred square feet typically.
Okay, well, there you go.
And what, single level?
Yeah, just a little rambler, you know, with an unfinished basement, and they don't even need to have a garage for me. You know, I mean, it's nice, but some of these folks will, that's kind of where I am.
Okay, you've also got to remember that when we built this first subdivision, we didn't aim it at the starter home.
I get it.
Because it is a third acre lot, a third acre lot's a lot bigger. Starter home, you, you have a smaller lot. So most of the people have built houses in there. Um, we would stipulate that we wouldn't, people could not build under fifteen hundred square feet, and they had to have a three car garage.
My, so, so not to interrupt, but I'm talking to, so my thought is, is I would love to see a product out there where a new family could move into, and then they could get another house where they could move up, and then they could get another house where they could move up. But then they could get another house where they could still live in the same subdivision or in the same area without having to change their location. If they, they could still live in the same city, and that would be their final home.
And I, and I think that phase two is presenting some smaller lots where they can do that, but almost within the same subdivision.
But I like those senior patio homes. I keep going back to the product that exists out in, out in Plain City. Those lots are a little smaller, but there's, they're a little patio home that, about that, by the park out there in Plain City.
So how big is the house?
I can't answer that, but I'm sure you can figure that out.
And I make one comment.
Yeah, and then we're gonna, we're gonna wrap up.
So with the parks, you know, you donate so much, you know, to each of the lots, to the, the parks, right? Uh, you know, seventy-five hundred, I, I just want to say that feels excessive, uh, for, for various reasons. We as developers want to contribute to the parks. We want to do that. But, but also, we also have, for example, just one, one example. There's water, culinary water, Tater West Weavers water, one thousand dollars per lot is the impact fee. So that was phase one. Phase two, eight thousand dollars per lot. But that's, that's a lot. You, you start to add eight thousand, seventy-five hundred, and then all the other development costs.
Amazing.
What we want to do is we want to try to build a lot that is affordable for these people that want to come and build them. But when you start to look as, as a developer.
For me, let me just interrupt you to say, you'd have to bring a letter in from, signed by the park district, and said they would be willing to come off with that seventy-five hundred dollar fee. Because they're the ones that sat around this table, just like you're doing today, and said, hey, look, it's really gonna be fifteen thousand or whatever, but they said it's, they just presented us the science, they put the raw data behind it, they did everything, and they said seventy-five hundred dollars a lot. We are trying, we are trying to support them, and, and this is the effort. So if there's gonna be a, you're coming to us now with a deviation, that the same deviation would need to be effect for me and in the park district.
But we've already had a meeting with the pastor button some six months ago, where we sat in there, and we agreed to the two thousand dollars, but the two thousand was retrospective, which is really crazy. Not only in the lots that we're building on, thirty lots, we're going back to the other fifty-four.
I understand and respect that, and if you could just get that in writing from them and, and in the park.
We've got it, right.
Okay, so, and, and bring that when you come back. Okay, I'm gonna entertain commissioners, I'm gonna entertain a motion to saunter for about five minutes, please.
I'm moved.
Second, all in favor of saunter? Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna.
Hans, H O N T Z.
H O N T Z.
Correct.
Great. Thank, that's a Korean name? No, I'm just teasing. Go ahead.
So I, um, had great fortune, and when Sean walked in the room, it was a blast from the past, because back in two thousand and one, I actually started working for Powder Mountain for, uh, some of the original ownership. And so, um, throughout the years, I've had, um, great experiences with Weber County, and, um, was involved with the creating of the new zone, um, the creation, and then the implementation of that to a certain extent. Um, but I did spend the last nine and a half years in the Deer Valley Park City region, bringing that resort to life. There, the property, it was called Mayflower, um, it was historically some mining claims, and so we went from forty acres to nearly six thousand. Um, as Commissioner Thor can speak to, um, it became part of the MIDA, um, districts, and, um, was, that was the jurisdiction that we were under, and so I got to, uh, see that project from forty acres, uh, in Wasatch County to nearly six thousand under MIDA jurisdiction, and so that was fantastic. But my entire career has been in resort development and design, and so this is like coming home, and I really look forward to working with you and the entire Weber County team on all of the things that we've got in store to complete kind of the vision that has essentially been in front of you for some period of time, so.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Hons?
No, welcome.
Will you make sure, Brooke, that you leave your contact information with Christie at the front desk?
Will do.
As you leave, and she can also give you our information as well.
Great, that'd be fantastic.
Jason, thank you for making the introduction.
Yeah, there's nothing like eyeball to eyeball, right? I didn't want to send an email, I wanted you guys to get to see each other, and so.
And it's better than a Zoom meeting, which I'm using. Every couple of months, I see her on Zoom, but yeah, she's done a great job. I can just say, from a MIDA perspective, uh, that's a great development, and it'd be amazing for our military people, and it's, yeah.
Amazing.
It's quite a project.
Yeah.
You're fortunate to be a part of it, happy, so, well, thanks for the time. We'll pick Brooke around and introduce her to a few others, but she'll be, so we see your number pop up, that'll be, that'll be her.
Very good.
So, but I'll be around, so if you guys need anything.
You're not off, I'm not deleting your number.
Join in on the biweekly.
Yeah, she'll actually lead those, so, and her title is Chief Development Officer, she's also Chief Construction Officer, so literally every single department in here, they get stashed by that. Uh, Anna still, will still be around for the legal side as well. Um, obviously, John, when does John? Transition, now, John Bonn?
John Bonn.
At the end of this year.
End of the year, at the, at the November time.
That's actually the end of the, actually December. And then, then.
When the election, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's when, the election happens in November, then he's off in December.
Got it.
Then Lanell, who's the only person on the, the election roll for that, will take over, and she works there now. She's one of her persons.
Yeah, great. And maybe, maybe you can help make an introduction there, I don't know that one.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for joining us today.
Appreciate it, Jason.
Thank you.
Hopefully we catch you back up.
At it, boy, you're good. Commissioners, we're gonna move now on to our next item, which is item number nine listed on our agenda, which is the discussion regarding the four hundred north vacation and conveyance, and conveyance of a county road parcels. We have, uh,
That's what I saw Bahi working on.
Sean Wilkinson, Liam Kio, and Bahi. Rahim Azad, then.
Rahim Zadigan.
Rahim.
Rahim Zadigan.
Rahim Zadigan. I'm gonna get that.
Thank you.
I didn't know, I hadn't known. This is just to show you kind of the spots. North is up.
Right.
Oh, wow.
So, Commissioners, he brought this to our attention a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we have some road parcels that were deeded to the county back in nineteen seventy. Uh, they were.
That's a long time, right?
Yeah, uh, so they were deeded to us then, as, and specifically as road parcels. They were then vacated in nineteen ninety-six, and you can see those on your exhibit. However, it's a little bit strange, because the deeds had reconveyance language that said, if the county ever didn't want these road parcels anymore, that we were supposed to convey them back to the original owner. So even though we vacated them, the deed trumps that vacation, and we need to reconvey these parcels, and they go back to GSL. So we need to work with GSL to reconvey, and that is that you see A and B. It's those two parcels that we need to reconvey back to them. Um, there's a, there's another small piece, you can see the arrow at the very bottom. Um, that piece was actually vacated appropriately, and we don't need to worry about that, because it was not part of the deeds. But then you see where Bahi has labeled Exhibit A.
Yes.
Uh, by plat nineteen seventy-nine. So that portion, um, it was deeded to us, but we can vacate that, we do not need to deed that back to anyone, because the deed did not stipulate uh, the reconveyance. So we are asking, what we're asking for is your approval to reconvey parcels A and B back to GSL, and then to vacate what he's showing as Exhibit A, and, uh, GSL owns on both sides of the road. So when we vacate, that road essentially splits in half and goes to the property owners on either side of the road. Uh, but we do not use that as a road, we don't maintain it, there's no reason for us to have it. Uh, so we would like to vacate that portion as well.
Signal problem. Commissioner Bolos, any questions? Commissioner Thor, any questions? I'll entertain a recommendation.
Let me just ask one question. So is there a road there now?
There's not, it's just dirt.
Just dirt, okay. That's what I thought. All right, no, I'm good with it.
Okay, entertaining motion for approval.
I don't think there's a motion.
Okay, fine. Go ahead.
I think there's approval.
Okay, move forward with. Okay. Move forward with this. Okay, so it has to go on your agenda for the reconveyance and the vacation. So we'll, we'll get that processed.
Put it on the agenda.
We just wanted to make sure that you understood what was going on and that you're okay with everything. But Bahi or Liam, do you guys have any other?
No, we, this went through legal. Bahi brought it to us and we were fine. We thought that was appropriate.
And I'm assuming Compass is, will accept it. I mean, it's a reconveyance. They don't have a question or have an option, I'm assuming legally.
Yeah, I mean, this, I don't know if we've reached out to them at all yet.
I haven't reached out to them yet.
Right.
Stephanie has a contact there because they, so.
The deed language should stand.
They should have, they should know from, I know seventies, but they should know that we're gonna give it back to them based on that.
Yeah. So I'll find out.
It might just, I'd give them a heads up because it's probably not gonna be a deal killer, but let them know.
Yeah, before I reached out, I wanted to make sure that, that we had talked to the Commissioners first. So I will reach out to Compass Minerals and we'll get that going.
I think it's great.
Okay, cool. All right, that's it.
Wow.
Quick.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great work, Dean.
Thanks, Bahi.
Bahi, thanks for getting that done.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Commissioners, I'm gonna now move on to item 10 on our agenda. While we're a bit early, I'm hoping that we can have a discussion regarding the JDC Ranch.
Missing Lacy.
Yeah, and I'm missing Charlie.
Yeah.
Christie?
That was at 1:30, so they may.
They've still maybe, we're a little early.
They might be in transit.
He's trying to get me out of here.
Yeah.
You have an appointment?
Yeah, I'm good.
Commissioner Bowles does.
Going that you follow right after me.
Yeah, I think I know where you're going there. Well, I'll entertain a motion to a time and uncertain for right now. We do have a 1:30 appointment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? We will saunter until around 1:30, but time uncertain. Commissioners, we've just ceased to saunter. This is a continuation of our work session on Monday, May the 6th, 2024. The last item for our work session today will be a discussion regarding the JDC Ranch, which is out in the, between Plain City and the far west area, out in the western part of the county. We have Charlie Ewerd, Nick Grover, Shawn Wilkinson, Tammy Ade Lot, Lacey Richards, Liam Keough, Brian Betis is also here. We also have, introduce your.
Casey Neville and planning permission.
Casey Neville. Sorry, I don't know your name. Casey, that's okay. I'll get that. Wayne Andriotti's here, and we also have Andrew.
He moved over here.
Averil and some members of the public, I guess.
Planning permission. That means in our planning office.
I'm brand new.
Great.
Oh, you're the new.
Thank you.
Wow.
Welcome.
Hey, Brandon, welcome. Okay, grab a seat over here, Charlie. Charlie, you're leading off the discussion, hopefully around the table. Go ahead, please.
Commissioners, hi. Haven't seen you a little while.
Oh, we also want to welcome Mr. Steve Waldrup here from the State's Office of Housing and Affordability and and Fobioism or whatever.
I feel like we should stand and welcome when he comes in.
All right.
So on your agenda, you've got a discussion about the JDC Ranch project and maybe some possibilities or some options for housing affordability. We know that Lacey and Brian have been working with Steve and Governor's Office on some options and potential to get some housing affordability in that project. And they just wanted to address that with you guys, but I wanted to make I wanted to make sure we recognize the planning commissioners in the room because we did notice this as a joint work session with the planning commission.
Wonderful.
Hoping that we could just get all eyes on and all ideas going because Lacey mentioned that it'd be nice if they can get kind of a expedited track on this, and so it'd be helpful to just have everyone's opinions at the table. So with that in mind, if you're okay, turn the time over to Lacey.
Very nice.
Thanks, Charlie. And yeah, Brian?
Yeah, I think maybe we'll just want to kind of be informal about this, if that's all right. We printed off some of these documents. So there's two, two plans here. We'll, we'll throw those on there. I was hoping we'd have some easels, but I should have let you know.
Are those two plans the same?
No, they're two different plans. So you kind of got to compare them side by side. Sorry, there, Gage. No problem. So this is the one without. So this is the currently approved general or JDC plan. So this is without the additional starter homes. And then this one has the additional starter homes. So essentially, the, the density has gone from seven hundred and twenty-five, which was the original approval. And we've gone up to, to one thousand, one thousand homes with each one of those additional homes falling within what we're calling, what we're kind of defining as the attainability category. And so that, we'll hand out, we'll hand out this flyer. At least, I don't know if you want to just kind of hand some of these out, but like. We'll send three your way. So these are the, send one over there to Gage too, Jim, if you don't mind. So about four pages back, there's a, there's a more detailed kind of breakdown. The first four homes that you see there are attainable homes. Those range in size anywhere from about nine hundred square feet to about fifteen hundred square feet. You have some single stories and some two-story homes there. Yeah, I've got a couple extra. Sorry. Did everybody get one that wanted one?
We've got a couple more. We think they're coming from the planning commission.
Okay, yeah.
I'll take that.
Perfect, yeah. I'm not sure how many to bring. So if you look back, they're sharing maybe three pages, keep going past, past the elevations, and then there's that sheet right there. So there are two different plans that we've got. We've got a Rambler Plan, which is a single story, and then we've got a two-story home plan that's, that's on there as well. And we've got, right now, we've got ranging anywhere from two to three options of each one of those plans, and it should, it kind of breaks the square footage down on the size as well as the bedroom and bathroom count. Now, those, those prices, it's important to notice that those are three forty to, to three ninety. And we, and then three seventy on the two stories to four hundred, four hundred thousand. And that's how we are kind of kind of defining attainable, attainable home and starter homes in our, in kind of our. I got more people coming in. Come on in.
Sir.
You guys who welcome to come around the table.
Uncle Jed, right over here.
Yeah. Yes. You're too old to be able to. I do.
Let's see.
We might, we might not have enough for everybody. We weren't sure how many to bring, so you might have to share with your neighbor. No? Yes? No? What are we doing? So we're talking about housing attainability, housing affordability. So that's just kind of in a quick, kind of maybe background, just wanted to kind of orient you guys on that. We'll get into some of the details of, of a lot of this. But from a high, high level perspective, these are the two kind of different concepts. So you've got the ones without, that's our currently approved plan that's already been approved. You guys approved that, I think, in two thousand and twenty-one or twenty, kind of beginning of two thousand and twenty-two. And then this would be the opportunity to add some additional density to make each one of the additional units would be the attainable homes. And that, that spreadsheet that you can see in that packet, that kind of breaks down what we're defining as attainable homes. And I, we, we're defining it that way, and we're kind of trying to at least somewhat coordinate with the state on what that attainability looks like. But we've tried to stay under that four hundred thousand dollar price point for those attainable homes. And these homes, again, they have, they have a range of homes. Probably the biggest change is, is that the garages, that we kind of have different, different plans that show different garage configurations. So some of them don't have a garage. Some of them have a one-car, two-car, and some of them have detached garages that you'll notice there.
Kind of taking it back to what starter homes were when a lot of us bought a starter home.
Yeah, I don't know if you see any familiarity with those starter homes that you guys see on there. Hopefully they look similar. Yeah, hopefully they look similar to what your, what some of your, your first homes. I know it looks like mine. And so, yeah, we've really changed kind of the paradigm. Right now, if you go out to Weber County, can you find homes in this price range? Not even close, right? They just don't exist, especially not new. They would be existing and they would be quite old. And so this is, this is our opportunity to provide.
What is your range?
Um.
Under four hundred.
Looking.
Always.
Look to the.
Right there?
Yeah.
In the middle. I missed it. I went right over. Don't get. There you go. Now you're cooking.
He's from Weber High.
Mine gets on really quick.
So easy, honestly.
So, so, so today, we kind of wanted to kind of build off of what the governor had talked about last fall. Hopefully, all of you saw that announcement. It's called the Utah First Homes Starter Homes Program. That was announced last fall in two thousand and twenty-three. And so this is our attempt to try to take that opportunity and kind of parlay that and work with Weber County, who has fantastic staff and fantastic elected officials to try to say, let's take a leadership role and not let the state decide or define what starter homes and attainable, attainability looks like for us, and try to take that bull by the horns and, and make, make a proposal. As we, as we kind of heard that announcement, we went back and we kind of said, how do we, how do we take what we do and fit this in? Does, does it make sense? And one of the challenges that we had is, well, we've kind of got an approval already. And so as we kind of reached out to the state and kind of had some conversation with Steve, we kind of spitballed a few ideas, and one of them was JDC. We kind of said, hey, does it make sense for us to come in and consider something different than the seven hundred and twenty-five units? When none of these would be attainable, none of these would hit this attainable price point, does it make sense for us to kind of come in and have this conversation? And we came in and kind of laid out a series of different plans with, with the staff. This was back in December to just kind of spitball the idea to say, does this even make sense for us to have this conversation about changing the approvals that we've just recently got? Now, one of the beauties of the approvals of JDC is it's quite flexible. And so without a lot of amending what's already been done, the work that has already been done on the approval stack is about that, that thick. We could amend this plan to provide for this opportunity, but we didn't even want to go down this path. The state wasn't supportive of it, and we didn't check those boxes. And so we, we worked in tandem with the state to say, how could we make this work and make this a quality community? And so that's one of the components that we were worried about. Obviously, this is our name. Our name is going to be on this for the next ten to twelve, maybe fifteen years, as we continue to build through this community. And we kind of said, we want this to be another legacy project like several that we've had here in the county before. And so we've said, how do we do this? What does this look like? What does quality look like? How do we achieve the quality objectives that, that, that meet the, meet the affordability requirements, but also meet that quality, that quality standard that we have at Nelson Homes? And so as we took a look at that, we really kind of wrestled with a few main concepts. And the biggest one was really integrating these attainable homes throughout the entire community. So it's kind of hard, it's kind of hard to see this on this plan because it is, it is quite small. But there's two different shades of homes that you can see here on this plan. I don't know if you want to pass it around or what, what, what's the best way to do that? But there's two shades, and the darker shade with the stripes shows the attainable homes. And so you can see those, that they're mixed throughout the entire community, and that really is probably the biggest, single biggest thing that we're doing is integrating the attainable homes throughout. We're not sequestering them, putting a fence around them and trying to kind of put them in a corner that those houses don't, they, they're integrated, and we, we plan to build those right next to our market rate homes. So that's probably the biggest component about, about quality that we've really tried to include, as well as the architecture. So we spent a lot of time, there are a lot of other builders that are focused on trying to figure out what attainability looks like, and it looks like a garage with the front door. And we said, that's not acceptable to us. We want to do this differently. And so hopefully in our architecture, you'll be able to see some of those, some of those commitments that we're making there and what our vision of attainability looks like. We've also talked about a deed restriction. The state has talked about having a deed restriction. We've also would like to see that deed restriction in place. Our owner, Nelson Homes, Jed Nielsen, has been interested in maybe even making this a longer than just five, a five-year deed restriction is kind of the conversation that's, that's being had at the state. We've talked about making that even longer. Well, we think that's a critically important component to say, you can't have renters or third parties come in and buy these homes and rent them out. This has got to be something that homeowners own. That's the objective. If we don't hit that objective, we're not accomplishing what the state, I think, is setting out to do. And so that's, that's been an important component of this. So we're kind of saying there'd be a five-year deed restriction on these homes. And then I guess another component is we're trying to say to the county, send a very clear message that this is something that Nelson Homes feels very strongly about, so much so that we're willing to put these at our entrance. So I don't know if you noticed, but Lacey showed this, showed this picture. This is our front door. This is where most of the traffic will be coming in and off of two thousand six hundred north. And we're putting those attainable homes right down here at the, at the entrance to the community. And that's a commitment that we're making to say, this isn't something that's an afterthought. We're not trying to hide it. We're going to put this front and center, and it's going to be a major part of JDC, this attainability component. And then another very important component, I know everybody probably has a different sense or a different, maybe a, a different feeling is, is wells up inside of you when you think about HOAs. I know everybody probably has a very different feeling of that. Our experience has been, as long as they are well set up and well maintained, they make a significant difference to the residents in the community. And so that's going to be a critically important component to this is that we've got our HOA attorneys drafting on these. We're about that thick right now. There's going to be a lot of rules and regulations, and we understand that may not be the Weber County way for everybody. But it's important that you set the standards when you're doing this upfront. People know what they're getting. They know what they're buying into. They are self-selecting. When they choose to buy in here, they're saying, I like this. I'm buying a home in here, and they're choosing to say, I've got to follow the rules. And if they don't, there are consequences to that.
And that's really about keeping it looking nice long term, you know, because when we came to staff and was, we've talked to people, they said, great, you put it in, it looks nice today. How do you keep it looking nice? The homeownership is a big piece of that, you know, making sure it doesn't turn into someone with an absentee landlord, not keeping an eye on it. The other one is, we're going to put in the landscaping. Did you talk about that?
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, part of the base price for these houses includes us putting in the landscaping because we know it's hard. You know, when you move into the house, you know, there's always little expenses we didn't think about. It's hard to be able to put that yard in right away, but we think that's important to have it be a beautiful community, you know, get those trees growing and maturing. So we're going to put those yards in. And the HOA is going to help people stay on top of their, keeping them looking nice.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a lot of components that we've given this a lot of thought. Really, I think since last November, when the announcement was made for this initiative to begin, we at Nelson Homes have spent a lot of time. I've, I've got a, a map that some of the planners in an earlier meeting, I think Bill in particular, really geeked out on. But it's, it's a great map that shows all of the different configurations of what these homes look like. And how do you make a zero-car garage, one-car garage, two-car garage? How do you make this fit at these, at these prices? And we have, I mean, literally hundred, we've considered hundreds of different configurations of how to make all of that work on a smaller lot. And so, yeah, so I think we've spent a lot of time studying this. We have plans that have been bid out to our contractors so that we have a pretty good sense of where this pricing is coming in at, and we know where we can offer these prices. So this is real for us. This is a very important component for JDC. And all of this being said, I think this is all of us, this is Nelson Homes trying to say we would like to present the opportunity in a way that makes sense for Weber County, but it's not something that we have to do, right? We are, we are ecstatic about the opportunity to build JDC Ranch, whether it looks like that or whether it looks like this. We are, we are ecstatic. I think this is an opportunity that we've wrestled with internally at Nelson Homes to say, how do we provide attainable homes for our kids in Utahns? And this is a way for us to do that, and it's an opportunity that we felt like would be too good to pass up. If you've driven out there by the community, we were just talking a minute ago about the construction. So we have broken ground on this community, but we're very, very early on. We're hoping to deliver the park in the southeast corner, as well as the first roughly hundred and fifty homes or so this next, this next year. And so as we do that, we still have a tremendous opportunity to plan the rest of this and make, integrate, really integrate the attainable homes throughout the community. And so we felt like this was early enough. It wasn't too far past, and it was in a municipality that really we felt like this may make some sense to at least have this conversation, have a work session with you all to get your feedback and thoughts on this. So with that, there's a lot more I could say. We spent a lot of time on this, but I don't want to take all the time, and I, I definitely want to, you know, if there's questions for us or for Steve. So we've worked closely with Steve on that. I know some of you have questions on that. So I think it's just kind of an open dialogue now for us to hear your concerns, questions, and thoughts.
Let me, I'm going to pause you right there and, and, and start by asking you a couple of questions because I know you've spent a lot of time, and certainly to get this over the finish line in early two thousand and twenty-two was a big deal. It didn't fit when this project was originally brought to Weber County. It didn't fit. There were conditions that were allowed in the current master plan that we were dealing with when this first came to the planning commission and to the commission. I know you went to Plain City multiple times. I know you went to Far West a couple of times. I think at the end, you ended up with, this is what, if I remember correctly, hundred and, hundred and eighty acre parcel?
Two hundred and thirty-six.
Two hundred and thirty-six acre parcel. And so my question is, is you ended up with that final seven twenty-five, or we'll say this plan over here with three hundred doors that were, that were higher density. They were patio homes. They were in townhomes. My first question before I go to that, if you're going to develop a product here for three forty to three ninety or three seventy to four hundred, your townhomes were going to be in the four hundred plus range. How are you going to market this? And then how are you still going to plan on marketing those townhomes? And then I have a follow-up after that.
Marketing.
It's a different product, and it's, how is that going to work?
Jim, if we put anything for sale at these prices, they will sell.
Well, I'm, I'm not concerned about that. I'm not concerned about these selling.
Yeah.
How are you going to sell your townhouses?
Those will, those will also sell. We're going to, we're going to, we're going, we're going to have to differentiate those. We're going to have to figure that out, and we're talking right now, actively talking about changing our townhome plans. But right now, and the governor's focus has been single-family detached. And so that's where we've decided to set, spend our time focused. And so that's where we've spent our time. But that would be the next component that we're looking at right now is to figure out that attainability component.
There's also kind of a, that's a follow-up, that there's also kind of a choice component to it. You know, if you don't want to take care of a yard, if you don't want to shovel your driveway, you know, if you want that attached garage for sure, a townhome might make more sense for you.
I respect that, and I, I really like the fact you guys have been, you guys have been so philanthropic in the community, and you've done a lot of wonderful things. I really, really, since we met individually with the, with you at Nelson, individually as commissioners, I really thought, and I love the deed restriction idea. The whole, for me, the whole idea is to create wealth for families, and renting doesn't do that, but a deed restriction to prevent in people to come in and, or investors to come in and buy them, and I think that accomplishes that great. I know you're trying to keep that HOA down around forty dollars a month. Let me play this hand now.
Yeah.
You have, in that plan, when we started, what you've done is you've taken all the bigger lots and you've turned those into more affordable or much smaller lots in, in between the two plans. What about taking, so that we could still comply with the state that all this, what about taking that existing three hundred-door product and turn that into the starter home plan that you've done there? So just start with the three hundred starter homes in that area, still use this plan, but in the higher density of the townhomes and the patios, put that in the, so it complies with that. How, how, why can't that work?
Tell me again, so you're saying, you're saying.
I'm saying, use the old plan, but in the higher density where you have townhouses and where you have maybe the patios, because we did two hundred patios, doors, and a hundred townhouse doors. What if you were to put three hundred of this affordable housing stuff in there? And that, you, you still use this existing plan, so we still save some of the bigger lots in there. How would that work, or why couldn't that work?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what your focus is. It sounds like you might have a couple in that, with that question. So there are, there are larger lots in this plan still.
Not like that.
Not, not like that. That's true. And there's not as many. We have our current plan right now. We're, we're actively, actively building homes out there, right? So JDC proper has a sewer line that's going in right now. It's taking four X because it's very deep and there's lots of groundwater, but we are putting, you know, third to quarter acre lots in, in the community. We're building those right now, and then there are other places that we are building those. So we're not getting rid of those entirely.
No.
I think part of, Jim, one of the, one of the critically important components of this is that this doesn't, you can't just take those homes and put in attainable homes on the, on the same number of homes that you had before and make it financially work. It just flat doesn't. We would rather stick with that plan right there and do all market rate and not deal with the attainability component. This is us kind of taking a step back, saying, if we were able to get additional density, what would that look like? And how would we make that? How would we, how would we allow ourselves to be able to give some, to, to build the attainable homes? And it, and it just doesn't work without additional density. That's why each additional unit that we're picking up, we're, we are offering that as an attainable home. So, Jim, that may not be a great answer to your question without getting into the numbers and spreadsheets and all that.
It's a financial number. That's what you said.
It's really hard. It's really hard to make it, make, make sense without picking up additional density.
Ranchers, I'll go to you next. Do you have any questions? And then I'd like to go to the planning commission. Mr. Bolos?
Yeah. I'm looking at these two maps, and I see townhomes over here, and this is designated as townhomes right here.
Correct.
Okay. It just looks like it's open space, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, good question.
A couple of things.
Yeah.
Um, what's the density on each plan? Overall density.
This one's a thousand and this one's seven.
Per acre, per acre.
Oh, I have to do the math really quickly.
You're about fifteen thousand square foot an acre here, maybe closer to twelve. And that one, you're about ten thousand.
Twelve and ten? Okay.
About three per acre, four per acre.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, on that one, we're doing just, I think it's just over three. And this one, I'm just doing the math right now, Sharon.
Okay. Well, you're working on that.
Four point two.
Four.
Four point two. So it's like, it's low threes to low fours.
Okay. Um. We had this conversation before and, and everybody in planning who's in the room knows that I always say this. If it doesn't fit the general plan, then I, I have to reconcile that. And I'm glad that um, you're working in partnership with the state. I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Because while I do, while I do want to, okay, let me finish my comment.
You're good.
Uh, while I do want to comply to the general plan or have a, a full, open discussion with the, with the community about what we're trying to do to change it.
Yeah.
I think a big part of that has to be the communication to the residents around there. That this is a, call it what you want. I would call it a pilot program. In conjunction with the state that we're trying to work with the state to provide a pilot program to see if we can make this work. Just because I think that, that that partnership is so important. To show the residents that what we're trying to do is not is not create more density for the developers, not, because I understand that this is not your product.
Right.
You guys are going out on a limb to provide this. But we're not trying to accommodate a developer by creating density. I would want to message if I was to entertain this, that we are working in a partnership with the state to try to do what the governor's asked us to do. And I think that it's, it, it, it's all about the presentation if we're going to consider this. And I think that's the way that you get buy-in from the public, honestly. I mean, the public will come to public hearings and say, well, they don't listen to us anyway. They're doing what they want, but i- if we present this correctly and we present the state as a component of the partnership, then I think we can get the public, I think we can get the public buy-in. But I appreciate, you mentioned Jed and, and his desire. And I was out at West Haven when the, that uh, press conference was done and that beautiful uh, development out there where there are some starter type homes out there and and the fact that, that Nelson Homes is willing to come to the table and say, this isn't our normal product. But we want to try to be a, a solution and not continue to be part of the problem. It's, you, you guys are going out on a limb. I get that.
It is. It is a risk to, to some of those concerns that Jim brought up just a moment ago. It's, it's weird. It's just flat weird when you're trying to sell single family detached homes for cheaper than your townhomes. But it's really, we, we are banking on a lifestyle choice is what Lacey focused on. And it's, hey, you can lock your townhome up and it's snowplowed, shoveled, all of that stuff is taken care of versus these. There's some sweat equity here. You have some opportunity to potentially finish a basement. Um, to build a garage, if you build, if you choose one of the plans, it's very, very affordable. You can come back later and build a garage. You can build more space as you, as your family grows. And so it's, it's a different, it's a different mindset, but it's like somebody's not going to worry about rolling up their sleeves and doing the artwork on Saturdays. Um, because, because, because the townhome is a different, kind of a different focus. Um, to your point, Sharon, I think we, we just, we just printed off the general plan quickly. Um, and we showed obviously J D C sits up here in this corner on the general plan. It's a mixed use um designation on the general plan. And then we provided that second page that goes with the mixed use general plan in there and it talks a lot about a mix of homes. Um, and so I don't think this opens the door. I know another concern that every single municipality that we ever talked to is worried about, which is if we open the door for you, how do we make sure it's not open for everybody else? There's not very many places that you have that mixed use zoning on your general plan. There are very few in fact. And I think that was, that was wise that the, that the county did that, but there are very few places where this would even be permissible or considered.
I respect that. I remember that when we did the very, it's because you guys were in the gate already. You guys were in there before we, I, I mean, before we really worked on the general plan collectively between the planning commission here. So I respect that. Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner?
I think that's it. And, and I might, I might be.
Yes, we hope so. She's got a, she's got another commitment to.
Tell God it's going to get me when I'm ready.
Yeah, so we've got, we've got other things going.
Commissioner, on your way out, do you have any mind if I just share with Commissioner Bolos in case she doesn't make it back? I'm more than happy to come to a community meeting and stand up and represent the government, see if we can get the governor there as well to talk about the concepts behind what we're doing.
That's really what I'm looking for.
And, and uh,
Just, just reply.
The, the, the conversation has to be different than it's been.
Yep.
And the legislature appropriated a million to owners um, uh, to a, to a five oh one C three for messaging campaign that will start this summer. Uh, we raised additional, uh, I think right now about another three hundred thousand dollars from, from other entities to come in and just talk about the fact that if we don't provide houses for our children and grandchildren, we're, we're, we're sort of breaking the covenant of America. You know, the, the American dream dies with us if we won't provide them with these opportunities. And so that's, that's really the message that we're trying to drive home with this is. And, and the critical piece to that is the ownership component and the deed restriction component. Those.
Deed restrictions, the key. That's, that's on the advertising with the state. If you're not talking or leaving that with deed restriction.
It's, it's a minimum of five. You can do more.
Yeah, we are.
That, that to me actually should go through several rotations of sale.
Yeah.
To, to keep it whole, it really needs to go through.
The, the other thing you could do, and this is another.
I want to be sensitive, Steve, with Sharon's time, stay.
Later go.
Yeah. Cause that'll bash us up all, keep, keep going. So.
Oh, I was just going to say, the other thing you could do in your communities, you could designate as a kind of a first right for certain job classifications. If you wanted to offer them first to teachers and to, you know, law enforcement, uh, firefighters, frontline healthcare. I mean, you can in that agreement that, that you make with the developer, talking about the deed restrictions, they're not going to complain about having people line up for their houses. And if you're giving the, the, the opportunity first to people in specified categories, not all of the opportunities, but making sure that those kind of preferred categories have an opportunity. That's another opportunity from a public perception standpoint to say, this isn't just, you know, thi- this is for the people we want in our communities. This is not for people we want. We don't want to live in, in you know, Box Elder County that are working in the sheriff's office here. We want them here.
Sure. Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
Thanks. Uh. Well, this takes me back about a number of years back in the mid seventies. And I don't, no, nobody's around except maybe, except maybe Jed. There was a construction company called Woodside that built a product very similar to that out in West Roy. They called them starter homes back there and they sold them for probably around thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. So you've got to start somewhere. And I think the first thing we have to realize is that, and I think Steve has already said it, is that if we don't take the initiative on this, we're thirty-five thousand units, according to the governor, underserved right now. If we don't have a place for our kids and grandkids to work, play and live, then they go somewhere else. So how do we keep them here? We're, the county's taken a very aggressive approach to bringing in uh, companies or having existing companies expand. We like them both. But it's talking about keeping our kids here, keep them off the freeways, let them again, live here, work here and play. How do we make that happen? You don't make that happen with six hundred thousand dollar homes. You can, you know, it's hard for me to even imagine three hundred and seven. That's above what uh, I even imagined, you know, ten years ago, but it, it is, it's a fact and we're not going away from that. So talk about the zoning. I think we, when we did the general plan, when we proved that, we talked about mixed use there for a reason, knowing that that probably is going to have to be our poster child for what's going to happen. I, if I look at the areas around Weber County that have, I guess, got a bad reputation for being affordable that now turn into undesirable places.
Ron Clare.
Ron Clare. It's because of the HOA function. I happen to be pretty familiar with HOAs. If you have a functioning HOA with somebody that keeps the boats and the campers and the garbage off the front uh, in a place, you've solved part of your problem.
Yeah.
Your other that I'd be interested in is you've got to have a decent exterior. I think you're going to have to come up with an exterior elevation. If you're fitting those between your market, your market's going to demand that. You're not going to sell your market rate homes if that home is not compatible.
That's exactly right.
So I, I don't think, I'm going to be too worried about that because that's going to be up to you if you want to sell your product.
Right.
So I think the zoning allows that. I don't think that's going off the charts. Um, connectivity, I, I'm going to look for planning to say, look, I think we've got enough roads out there to handle. Connectivity, roads is a big thing in my mind.
Yeah.
And obviously the other infrastructure that has to take place.
Yeah.
As I think I said it earlier, when I have been in meetings with the governor, I think Steve would probably validate this. Good infrastructure makes good development. If you've got the infrastructure here that's, allows that to happen, it will happen.
Have you said that? Let me go ahead.
Right there. Just be careful. But you know, he- here's the bottom line. If you paid attention to any of our fellow members down at the legislature this past two or three years, the message is pretty clear. They're putting, and they're not going away. They want attainable housing. They're tired of these cities and counties that continue to have a no growth philosophy because people moved in from outside the state. Now they want to be, they want to close the door. Uh, they're tired of that. And right now they're putting heavy pressure on the cities. They left the counties out of this a little bit. But you know, I've talked with enough of my former colleagues down there, they're not going away. And after they take care of the cities and take over zoning for the cities, which they will eventually, we know that's going to happen.
Yeah.
If the cities don't get the message, they'll come to the county and say, county, you show us what we're doing now. Now we're in charge of zoning, you're not. So I think it's, I think it's in our best interest that we develop a plan rather than have some of my col- former colleagues down at the state. Not that I don't like them. And they do a lot of things right down there, Commissioner Hargreaves, just so you know.
Thank you.
And I'm sure former Representative Walden would second that, but I, I think we need to take the initiative, but I, I would like to, like to hear from the planning.
That's where I'm headed next. And I'm going to start right over there with Frank's best boy right there, Uncle Jed.
I don't know if it's the best.
Boy, I know that. It's the best one.
I knew the other two.
Actually, I have no problem with that. I think the lots that they're talking about on that far end, they'll all have to be a narrow, narrower. Is that's the footprint of where the price starts. The wider it is, more cost per lineal foot in front of the house.
That's right.
And there are a lot of people that would prefer to own a single family. And there are still a lot of people that would rather just do this on the nights. So I think you've got the best of both worlds. I.
You lost me there. I don't know what that.
Yeah, you do. We don't have shoulder surgeries anymore. We have thumb surgeries.
They milk and cow. Appreciate that. And then
these might be your challenge over here. I think what Gage is talking about in this area is if you're going to sell uh, the townhomes, the smaller frontage and then the big frontage, this might be your hardest challenge right here. But it will make a nice neighborhood because you, these people will be able to have their kids, they'll be able to find something in here. When these guys outgrow it, they'll be able to move up into here. I, I think it's a total package and I, I don't see anything that's a challenge, but that's just me. And there's seven or eight of us down there.
Great. Thank you. Wayne, you next.
I've got two comments. First comment is, is this is one thing that I always call it a program or a project where you got a thousand reasons not to do it. But our job is to find the one reason why we can. And I think this is a good option. And as far as the general plan goes, and some of my colleagues has heard me say this before, but you know, if it doesn't work for everybody, it shouldn't work for nobody. And I'm thinking that I think we're going to have a little bit of buffeting. It's going to be in the way that we sell it. This is how we're here could set the stage for that because, you know, I, I think we should be tired of having our kids have to live somewhere else. And so I'm, I, I think that this is a good plan if we do it, but I think that we need to very astutely do a lesson learned on every face of it. From the build through the sales to the families there and the turnover. And to make sure that it stays in that part of the financial for people wanting to come on. And the build that backed Uncle Jed is, is it could be a, a place where somebody doesn't have to leave there if their job doesn't take them away. That's a win-win.
Agree.
That's all I got to say about that.
Thank you. Ms. Wicker?
Casey, did you?
Casey. Casey, I'm sorry. Are you?
Jim, I only met you like twenty times. It's all right.
I have a thing with guys with hair, you know, they're always. That's a jealousy thing is right.
Thank you.
I honestly, I have a lot of respect for, for these guys for coming up with this idea and trying to be proactive. Um, I like the idea. I feel like in our community, we hear townhomes and people think of that as a four-letter word. They don't like it. But they don't realize that there's a lot of people that really want those as well. We did our little field trip a month ago or so, and that was a big education piece for me. The way that was presented, we saw everything. I like this idea, like um, Commissioner Andriotti said, where they can have one place and they can move into another, right? Within their same community and never have to really leave. And that's really what everybody's talking about. We want to stay in our community. Which I, it's my concern because I like those bigger lots for that opportunity as well. So those going away kind of takes away that extra opportunity. Doesn't mean that they can't still move through there, but it would, and I don't want to penalize them for being proactive either, but it would be nice if we could maybe, if it was possible to have this idea in place of some of those townhomes, like you were saying earlier, Jim. That would be my suggestion. And if it's not financially possible, then I totally understand that. And it's not a must. And again, I don't want to punish them for trying something new, but I like the idea that somebody could have a bigger lot too, because there's still people like myself that want a slightly bigger lot, not a huge lot, but a slightly bigger lot. So to have that as an opportunity, I think is, is a good thing. But if I'm trying to weigh both of them, the bigger lot compared to people having an actual home like this, I think that's a better benefit.
Thank you. Casey, appreciate it. Okay, Sarah.
All right. Yeah. I think it's the right product in the right place. Um, yeah, like everyone said, um, yeah, I really appreciate you going through the, the trouble of looking at this. I have more just kind of logistical questions.
Yeah.
Um, so as far as what makes the home attainable, are the market rate homes subsidizing the affordable or the attainable homes? Or is it just the density that causes that attainability?
I, I think it's the combination of both of those things.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. You could say that it's one or the other. Um, but yeah, we, we, we are taking a significant discount on the lots that are, that are, that are attainable um, to offset some of those costs. To make them hit these price ranges, you have to. You couldn't charge the market rate for that lot and still hit these prices.
And that's where the density comes in and it's important.
That's why the subsidy is, is, is critically important. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would say that. That's, that was the, the, the whole concept behind the financing package and everything that was passed in legislature was e- everybody has to take a step to the middle. We're asking these guys to take less of a profit on everything that they build, but they're getting a little bit more. But you know, they're going to have to build more to get more. And so it's, it's not a give to them. They're going to have to work for it. At the same time, the lenders are coming in with the lower rate, the state treasuries contributing to that. And then the communities are contributing some additional density, but they're getting back the ownership and the long-term deed restriction. So so the concept was nobody is alone in the middle of that pot, which is typically kind of how things are done. Gage been there. You know, somebody takes it in the shorts and, and everybody else is laughing on their way to the bank. The idea was everybody has to take a step to the middle. And, and by requiring them to, to do sixty percent of these at that price, they can't use the others to subsidize. We're doing five percent, then they could use the others to subsidize. And that's typically what happens in attainable housing. But by saying, hey, you got to do this mass of them, they have to build what, what, what costs that or else it doesn't work. And so that's why the smaller lots come in and the, and the smaller square footage. Um, they're still going to make money, but it won't be as much as they would make if, if they were building this other plan and they could sell them all for six hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. I just, I just, because I know there are needy people in every range of the housing market. So I need to see someone overpay so that someone else can get a good deal on their home. So um, I like that everyone's contributing. I'm, I like the idea of contributing density to be the main driving force in getting those prices down because that's kind of even Stevens. Everyone's fair when you're talking density. But yeah, I don't like the idea of someone paying more for their house. But if it's market, more marketable to someone and they're willing to pay more for more of a luxury, you, you can figure that out. That's, that's awesome.
No, we, we will, we will, I mean, uh, our typical homes, it's like the market will pay on a market rate home, the market will pay what the market will pay.
Mm-hmm.
On these attainable homes, they will be artificially kept lower for this purpose here.
On these attainable homes, they will be artificially kept lower for this purpose here, in order to check the box that Steve's talking about.
Well, and I think that, um, talking a little bit about what Steve said before, bec- the demand will be high. And we talk about certain jobs, um, that's one thing, but I would be more interested in a local housing.
Yeah, I, I had that thought. Uh, that would be really cool. Like you had parents in the community, you had a shot. I mean, that would be amazing.
Well, if people working in the community would be my, my biggest factor is I don't want to build houses for people working in Davis County. Davis County can solve that problem. I want this to be houses for people in Weber County. So, and I don't even particularly care what job they have. I, uh, it, it would be nice if we wanted to do, um, people working in Ogden and Weber, um, you know, in the, in the county itself, certain professions, that would be fine. But I think making, um, like a priority to local working residents, I think would be really.
I like it better in Weber County too.
Yeah, well, it, it cuts down transportation.
It, it cuts down on transportation and then we're, we're not paying for housing and schooling and, um, everything for people in Davis and Salt Lake. I, I just don't have that.
I think it's a great idea, but I, I would just hinder the restrictions for them because this location is on the border of Fox Elder where a lot of those people are going more. So I'd hate for those people that want to be in those families, you know, to keep their family there to, I mean.
Fox Elder can build one of these if they want. But no, I know what you mean, but I get that's the idea. Okay, um, Steve restrictions. Oh, and I, I know in the general plan, we talk about highly, um, higher efficiency in homes to get that density. And I know it's really hard when we're talking about attainable homes, but I, I get concerned when we use lower quality projects and we've got people that are having a hard time affording the home and then they're supposed to paint it in seven, ten years. Um, and energy efficiency, I like paying a lot more in utilities because they're getting a less expensive home. Um, are you meeting those higher energy requirements? Is that a plan?
Well, so there's, um, the, how you define higher level energy requirements, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a really slippery slope. So, you know, there's different states that do different things and we're kind of figuring that out. We will meet the state standard today.
Okay.
These homes will have the same water heaters as our other homes. These homes will have the, maybe different appliances, but energy starboard wise, they'll be efficiency, they'll be similar. We're not like, we're not, we're not, and hopefully it's, it's, again, it's hard to tell from a picture, but we're not like out just cutting corners everywhere we can. We're leaving off the grubs, which is a big deal, right? We're talking about nine hundred square feet, which is a big deal. That's hard for a lot of people. So Steve talks about everybody being exposed and inclu- including the consumer. They have to live in something that may be a little bit uncomfortable for them, but they, it's theirs.
Yeah.
They bought it, they can afford it. So I've kind of twisted that conversation maybe a little bit away from what you're talking about. Yeah, it will be the same energy standards that we're building on these homes. That's not, we're not shaving there to, to save a couple hundred dollars on the water heater and make it very inefficient.
It'll be, it'll be state standard. Nothing, nothing more, but nothing less.
No, no, yeah, nothing more, nothing less, yep. So are you saying like this, they're getting the house, not the garage for that three ninety? Yes, so it is a base price. So it's, if, if there is a basement and we'll be able to fit basements on some of these homes, groundwater prohibits it in some locations. But that's why the townhouse will still sell because. That's exactly right.
But they're also, but you're saying that the zoning would allow that second structure, that detached garage later on. That's the way I understood.
That's exactly right, yeah. Another question with that. Your development is the one West Haven off forty seven hundred, the Greens property, right? Yeah.
Yes.
Are all those way in the back, except with Brent's property, is that, are those townhomes? Are they all considered townhomes? There's a mix. There are townhomes, but then there are also single. Something kind of like this? Uh, no, but this is not, we're not building anything like that. It doesn't exist. So we're, we're, we really are taking the risk that, that we talked about earlier. Yeah, there's, there's no nine to fourteen hundred square foot new home construction being built right now unless it's like a government subsidy.
Is it anywhere in the states, Steve?
Because what I would encourage is our citizens to refer them to that development. Honestly, because when I drive in there, when I hear townhomes, I'm like, I mean, Andrew's heard me complain about them numerous times. Well, you drive in there, like, that's a townhome? It doesn't feel like a townhome and it creates a new environment and a new, you know, it just, it's a better neighborhood. So I think you all have done really well. So if you can continue that with this, I think it will be a nice.
Yeah, it's sometimes it's hard to continue learning, like.
Right, yeah. And for me, I'm a visual person, I need to see it, so.
Andrew next.
Makes sense, Casey. A couple of things. Um, hopefully we're going to have more, another meeting like this. I mean, I think looking at this kind of a kickoff, I, I hope that we have more time in front of the commissioners, planning commissioners and commissioners and, and Nelson Homes about this going forward. Because there's a lot, we're, we're fifty, sixty thousand feet here and, you know, beginning to some of the details, you know, that, that are coming up in here. I hope we're going to have, or we're planning on having some more interaction about this. I think it's great. I think it's very well needed. And what's really ironic to me is when I was a kid, there were no jobs. So everybody was leaving the states. Now, we've got all of these jobs with Commissioner, you know, Commissioner Frower mentioned. We've got all these jobs and now nobody can afford to stay here because we can't afford to live here. So it's really, in my lifetime, I've seen a, a complete hundred and eighty degrees on, on how we can't afford to stay in Utah. And I think it's time for the sake of our kids and our grandkids to be able to stay here.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
I think we have an opportunity. And, you know, and like Commissioner Bolo said, you know, this is a pilot program. We, nowhere else can, you know, really, you look at the developments we've been dealing with in the county, very fewer at a size like this that we can make this mesh. And I think there's some key things that they've done, because this is kind of a outlying part of the county. I mean, you got Far West around and Plain Cities surrounding this. This is basically that whole development. I think they've been mindful of that. They're keeping larger lots around that, at the exterior of it. So neighboring subdivisions aren't going to see it. I think one of my favorite parts of it is they're mixing it, they're blending it. You don't just have an area of, I'm, I'm going to say blighted, as, as it could go in the future. You know, I, I think it's going to, it, it'll strive these future homeowners to do better, keep up that yard because of what their neighbors are doing. And, you know, they feel a part of that community because they might be next to a, you know, a four thousand square foot house. And, and everybody, it just flows really well. I, I think the county, you know, and, and Steve could maybe mention this as well, but I, I think Weber County has the opportunity to be a frontrunner in this, in this housing crisis essentially. With the pro, with, with this project in particular. It's not going to fit everywhere and there's not a lot of developments that we get to see. I mean, looking back on what we've approved over the last few years, yeah, this one's two hundred and forty acres. The next biggest one is, what, Navy at seventy-two? You know, we don't see these big proposals come in that often. And, and this is where I think we have a developer that's willing to step up. I think, you know, the county should be able to step up as well. It fits what's in our zoning right now. There's no changes to the general plan that's got to be made to make this fit. I think it's an opportunity. I, I really would like, you know, and, and I know Steve said he's willing to. It'd be nice to see, you know, the state come behind us and say, look, Weber County's been a frontrunner. You know, we've partnered with, with Nelson, Nelson Homes essentially, and with the state of Utah to say, look, w- we are trying to attack this crisis in a way. And I, I, I think it's an awesome opportunity we have to look at in the future.
Press release has already been read.
I don't, I'm sorry, I recognize you, but I don't know you.
How are you?
That's the better half of Jared.
His selection of wives, I know that already. Of course, we've got to talk about his mom and dad and they're wonderful people. But are you, are you, I'm sorry, are you?
I'm on the planning.
Yes, I'm coming to you. Would you be willing to make some comments?
Um, yeah, I think this is a positive push in the right direction because we do need more affordability. So I, I think it's great. So there you go. There's my thoughts.
Thank you. As I look around the room, is all the, have we had all the opportunity for the planning commissioners to speak? Steve, I know you're anxious. Just give me another second. Commissioner Bullis, would you have a follow-up on anything?
I don't know what I missed, so I don't know what to follow up on.
You know, a lot of things. Steve, I'm going to give you a chance for some final comments.
Yeah, I, I just appreciate the thought that's gone into this. Um, when Nelson Homes heard about the initiative, they reached out and said, what can we do to help? And, and that says a lot about who you're dealing with here. Um, and this will be the first project of any significant size in the state to follow this new path. And it'll be, it'll be something that everybody will look at and say, well, we can do this. Because this is going to be someplace where I, I put my kids in there and heartbeat. Um, here's one, here's one number. I'll just give this to you to remember. So the difference in the United States between the net worth of a renter versus the net worth of a homeowner, the median net worth of a renter in the United States is ten thousand four hundred dollars right now, total net worth. The median net worth of a homeowner in the United States right now is three hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred dollars. So if we do three hundred additional homes here, you're talking about a hundred and twenty million dollars of generational wealth that you are literally creating out of a planning commission and a county commission decision for people. This is not government wealth. This is, this is individual generational wealth that you're creating. And that, that can't be overstated. I mean, that's a huge number for those families. And it's, it's a life-changing number for generations. So thank you for your time here and, and everything you guys are doing. And Brian, Lacy and Jed, they've been fantastic to, to kind of throw the books open and say, what can we do?
So, uh, one of the things I wanted, as we were getting closer to wrapping this up, one of the things I'd like to, to, is you, you're coming to us and asking us to find a way to say yes. Certainly changes the original plan, Brian, from where I originally was to get to seven twenty-five. And now you've absolutely, I've got fourteen phrases in my mind that are not more appropriate right now. But I'm realizing, you know, um, each one of you, whether you know it or not, I respect a great deal, even from where you come and where, how you've grown up and realizing the needs. You guys, uh, you guys, you, planning commissioners are the hard soul. Really, we, we take so much stock in what you say, mostly, mostly. Except for when Brent's wrong, which I'm sure you all told me. But no, but, um, I realize that maybe I'm, I need some adjustment in my thought process. Because by gosh, I'm bound right there at third acre and I get that, I get that.
We don't have to be elected.
Yeah, doesn't matter. This isn't for me and that's, thank you, but that's not about, it's making the right decision, even having to do the hard things. I respect what you said, Steve, with regards to net worth. I grew up in a home just like this. Um, two bedroom, one bath, finished, no, an unfinished basement and a carport. And I found safety there. I found safety there and, and because the community around there helped raise me. Um, but a couple of things that I, that I, I'm going to tell you that, that are going to be hot buttons if I were to morph. Deed restrictions are huge and five isn't enough. Jed talked about ninety or ninety-nine. So somewhere in there, if you're asking for us to find a way to say, move forward, that deed restriction's got to come up at least five decades. Fifty is a minimum. Uh, I like the comments that you made, Casey, with regards to first responders or school employees. But I, I even liked, you added to it, Sarah, when you said if they work in Weber, if they live in Weber County or maybe if they work in Weber County. Um, I don't want to prevent somebody who maybe lives in Davis County that has to commute here to work. So maybe I, I, I don't know about that yet. I need a little more direction on that. But if they work or they live in Weber County, something that encourages, since Weber County's the one doing it, I don't want to bonus Fox Elder or Morgan or Davis. Let them do it themselves. And if they can't, oh, that's, then they need to find here in Weber County. Um, exterior finishes that were talked about by Commissioner Frowe to make this a really, really nice maintenance-free product for a lot, a lot of years. My, my little home was brick growing up. It wasn't wood, but it had an exterior finish that we didn't have to paint a lot. Uh, and one thing that's lacking in this other plan is connectivity. If I want to access these parks, is good, well, you do have, you got that trail there, but a connectivity trail, maybe I just can't see it.
Jim, it's, there's, there's miles, there's legitimately miles of trails. As you cut through all of this, we've been very intentional. One of the biggest changes with COVID, that, um, HO would like the master planned communities, that you have larger communities out there. The, the main thing they want used to be pools, used to be clubhouses, and now by far and away.
I want to see kids riding on a bicycle or a mom pushing a stroller or something out there where a car can't go or a motorized vehicle. Uh, next thing that's really important to me, the Park District came in and made a big, big presentation to us. How does this work for the Park District? I mean, is this going to work for their existing plan? That's important to me.
It's all HOA.
Okay, that, that answers that. How many, how many senior doors do you got in this community? You had two hundred. How many you got now?
Two hundred.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Bullis? What's the next process then?
So we'll probably have some more work sessions with the, our new commissioner on this.
I'd love, I'd like this, and I'd like these guys to go.
I just want to just point out, you're looking at a planning commissioner in the middle of the day, every single one of them are here. Every single one of them, whether they're working or not, they're volunteering and they're at this table.
Yeah, thank you.
And they're, they're amazing. Um, this planning commission on Western Weaver, they're, in my mind, at their best in the state. Um, I get it. And they are very forward-thinking. I just want to thank them.
Thank you. Steve, if this, if this whole thing, if this were to go, has to come, not think about it, not try, must. It's a shall, not a may. Has to be messaged homeownership.
Absolutely.
This whole thing, leader, and it has to be homeownership something Weber County, where it has to be, it has to be Weber County's investing in their future with young families.
Hundred percent.
And, 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 and for you, for you investors that want to come in and rent, you're not welcome.
Yeah, find someplace else. Go to Park City.
Yeah.
Well, they started a mill.
You know, there are, this is, we, we, we've been asleep at the switch, frankly, on, 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 uh, corporate ownership of residential homes. And it's happened across the country. Utah, last year, thirty percent of what we built was bought by corporate ownership. And that is way, way, way too high. And it's because this is a great place to invest. Investment now goes to our kids and grandkids, and that's the point. You're exactly right, Jim.
Okay, well, glad you could join us. Uh, yeah, I know you've been, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have been wanting to go where you were.
You've had more fun here than I did.
Okay, we've got a three-two. So, uh, if that, that's, I think, I think it's safe to say for the most part, and I think I know where you are on this. Um, we talked about just bring Commissioner Frowe up to speed. Sorry to belabor this with everyone's mind, but a deed restriction greater than five years.
I like that.
And maybe people who work or live in Weber County, local people, because we don't need to necessarily need to benefit the Davis County or Box Elder and Morgan County people. And the finishes we talked about, trail connectivity, they talked about good. They still have two hundred senior citizen doors for people like Jed who graduated in class sixty-five. Sorry.
Yeah, I like that. And I, I like kind of this idea, but I'd like to also, you should bring up a good point is, you know, you're right on that Box Elder border. And if they happen to work at Nucor, that's, so.
I'm not opposed to that, but I don't think we want to necessarily stop people.
Well, we can put a percentage to it.
Yeah.
But if they're getting a better deal on a house, maybe they can afford to work to let go of that job and get one of your.
That's true. Well, we're not making decisions today.
Right, yeah.
Anyway.
I do have one follow-up.
Okay.
And Gates can go along with this. And I first like what Lynn said about setting the example for the cities because the cities now have too much power.
Yeah.
And they're controlled by the people that came in. They own a lot less property than the big owners that have been there since the eighteen hundreds. And in the past, and Gates can verify this, it was, the cost of housing was controlled by the economy. Uh, how much your materials was, your land purchase and interest rates. And they fluctuated through the years. Like, uh, I can, I can remember Ron Clare being sixteen-nine and now they're three.
Yeah.
And they're not a bad home. I'm not saying anything about that. And after the first, uh, the Second World War, uh, we got Washington Terrace and there were government programs to sponsor that. And so all these things have fluctuated through the time. And so all these things have fluctuated through the time. Now it's scaled down to where which city has the most power uh, to control what goes in their area. And that's, I think, where the state's coming from too. And I think it'd be a great example for the county to get on board with something like this. And this takes, uh, was it two hundred acres?
Two thirty-six, yeah.
Two thirty-six, so there's not a lot of places left that you're gonna be able to get something.
Well, you know, Drew, you bring up a good point. And in conjunction with that, Steve, I'd like a little help. Because some of the feedback I get, this is close to the big public ride, the, the big freeway out there. But we're gonna need some help, uh, with the state of Utah, Carlos and them to do something with that road coming in. And that freeway intersection off of there.
Well, this.
When you add that much more density, it's gonna kill it.
To that group and you say, look at what's coming now, now you have an argument around that, which is nice.
Yeah, maybe light on Sanders Street. The junior high.
Exactly. That's gonna have to be accelerated. Okay.
Jim, um, if I may, we're available. I know it's hard to have these meetings and it's hard to leave, you know, cut out halfway through the day to be here. So if you have other questions, it's, this maybe is not the best setting to get into some of these details. So if you want, Lacy and I are happy to come and meet with any of you at any time for any, well, hopefully for this reason, but for almost any reason. Um, but yeah, I think that's important. And then I don't, I don't know what the next step is in terms of the approval process. Sorry, I'm not sure what the next step on the approval process is, but we are building infrastructure out here right now. And we'd love to be able to know a little bit more about, hey, this is what.
Let's, let's have smoke slow cooking, but.
It'll be Rick.
Yeah.
I know you got stuff going in the ground.
Perfect. I just know these guys meet only once a month, which is great. Um, we just want to make sure we're hitting our schedules. For this, for this, Rick, you can, as far as I'm concerned, you can put together a quorum anytime you want. That's how important.
Yeah, yeah, get this done.
Yep.
Appreciate that a lot.
Yeah.
All right, if there's nothing else, all entertaining motion for our last item?
Good to you, Jen.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Or adjourned. Thank you. Andrew?